ng hearing sa PCSO na dedicated para sa charity. Go up please.
Your honor, I have to admit, I am just new with PCSO. I am just there for about six months. So I have not yet looked into these matters, but I will be looking into this in the preparation of our annual audit report for this year.
Pero kung babase natin sa batas, 'yung umira na batas ngayon, no matter how old the law is, specific 'yung charity fund for charity. So at the outset, even if you're new sa PCSO, di ba pagkang item mo for charity, hindi mo pwedeng gamitin pang bayad ng dock stamps? Hindi mo rin pwedeng gamitin pang bigyan ng shares of PNP or any other recipients?
Yes, your honor, but we will also look into what are the basis for that? If there are any, any, ah, ano to? Because just like the other agencies that I had, 'yung sa paggo, meron sila talaga na parang mandated by law. So I will look into the law that's mandating these all contributions and what is the proper fund that it should be taken from?
Kasi if there's a need to clarify this, when we draft the committee report or the substitute bill or what 'yung irereport sa floor, eh, para ma-incorporate natin, para wala ng vagness in the interpretation, because sometimes, pag big lagi 'yung interpretation, naiwas sa discretion eh. Because it's big, you know, hindi, hindi claro. And we'd like to get your input on this, para pag dinraft na namin 'yung final draft ng bill, ah, mas malinaw at saka may, may control.
Yes, your honor.
Mr. Chair, can I add to that? The basic problem, Mr. Chair, is the, 'yung IRR kasi, nagmention ng mobile hand terminal, but the ongoing practice ngayon, yayahan ng PCSO, is pablitos na malinaw sa IRR that each ticket issued should be a better instrument. Based on that, Mr. Chair, that better instrument should be the basis for the documentary stamp tax. And dapat, sila po 'yung magbabayad for every transaction that is the document, there should be a tax. So technically, dapat, two things, Mr. Chair. Number one, dapat, ibagbawalan talaga 'yung pablitos. Dapat better instrument as mandated by the IRR na ano po, na, kumbaga may watermark, government-printed form, 'yung each ticket, that should be the basis of the documentary stamp tax. As against now po, under declared po ang sales, under declared rin ang pagbayad po, Mr. Chair. So, marami talaga ang problema po, ah, ang implementation. Although the IRR technically is sound, 'yung implementation lang po nagkakaproblema. But of course, there's a lot of room for improvement in aid of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In the meantime, we'll leave that behind, ano? But will not also prevent us from tackling the same issue. Now we'll go back to the more contentious issue, 'yung sa STL operations. And like to hear from Mr. Bago here, because this is the first time that he's appearing. Although I, I received a letter or a letter from him, ano? This was originally endorsed or sent to the office of the president, who in turn turned this over, referred the matter to the GM of PCSO last July of 2017. Apparently, no action was taken, and that's the reason why I was given a copy by Mr. Bago. By the way, Mr. Bago is a former police superintendent. Anyway, paki, ah, sabi niyo lang 'yung background and papano kayo napunta rito?
Yes, your honor. Good morning, Po, so, Sanat. Ah, meron pa ako na prepare, ah, your honor, na sworn statement, apitadid. Ah, pwede po bang basahin?
Yes, please, but introduce yourself first, ano? Kasi hindi rin, hindi rin malinaw kung papano ka napunta rito at saka papano mo nalaman 'yung kalakaran sa, tungkol sa STL operations?
Kasama po sa statement ko po. Ah, backgrounder po, ah, I am retired police superintendent Antonio Miguel Bago, a resident of 440 Rosal population West, Sayang City of Munyos, Nueva Ecija, of Legal Age, married to former Maria Lourdes Garland Villarmino of Cacayandioro City, with two children, Mark Anthony and Carlo Reina Bago, living quietly with their own respective families. It was on May 18, 1973, when I joined the military service as an enlisted man in the Philippine Marine Corps, Philippine Navy, assigned with the 9th Marine Company, 1st Marine Battalion stationed in Hulusulu, Mindanao Island. Later, I was commissioned into the regular force of the defunct Philippine Constabulary on April 1, 1975, and I was called to active duty on October 16, 1975. During my military and police service, I held several and various sensitive positions as a rifleman in the Marine Corps, ammo bearer of our marine company, platoon leader, provincial investigation officer, provincial intelligence officer, company commander, assistant provincial commander, district director, regional staff officer, task force commander, and special detail or representative to the Department of Agriculture as the chief security officer, providing security to the multipurpose irrigation and power project in Pantabangan, Nueva Ecija. Likewise, your honor, I have undergone 28 local regular courses, special trainings and seminars, all in my military, police and civilian schooling. I served the government uninterruptedly for 25 years of continued service, to where I was a recipient of 18 military, police and medals and awards, letter commendations and citations from civilian entities and organizations, one among which is the Medallia ng Katakilaan Award in defense of our democracy in 1989, Kuatam. It was on March 27, 1998, your honor, that I left the police service, when I ran for a political position as candidate city mayor of the Sayang City of Munyos, Nueva Ecija, in support to the secretary, Renato Devilla, running for as president of the Republic of the Philippines under the banner of Reforma Democratic Party, but lost during the national and local elections of May 11, 1998. Paragraph 1, your honor, that on January 24, 2018, I attended the Senate hearing on games and amusement presided by the honorable Senator Pamilla M. Laxson, being the chair of the Committee on Games and Amusement, to deliberate on SBN 1470, Creation of the Philippine Charity Office, and SPRN 577, Senate Investigation and Inquiry into the PCSO STL Regularities, Corruptions, anomalies and scandals. For this purpose, ah, your honor, the undersigned provided the Senate Committee copy of the manuscript PCSO reforms and programs of actions containing unsolicited proposals, ideas and suggestions on how to better improve the management and operations of the PCSO. Your honor, I am just expressing my personal concerns and issues for this agency. On paragraph 2, your honor, during the Senate hearing-
Mr. Bago, gaano ka haba pa 'yan? Ilan minutes pa sa tansya mo?
Medyo mahaba-haba.
Please go direct to the point, ano? Ah, una, anong karapatan mo? Bakit may knowledge ka about this? 'Yung sinulat mo sa presidente, na napanisian ako? Nakaraan ng ganong background sa operation?
Your honor, during the time kasi, ah, may mga bagay na, may mga bagay na sir Nono, na mga nakikita ko sa, sa PCSO. Nag-usap kami sir Nono, pag opo ni General Baluta, nag-usap na kami. Sabi ko, ito 'yung mga bagay-bagay na dapat na mapago sa'yo.
No, no, aside from that, ano 'yung, meron ka bang personal experience tungkol sa operasyon ng STL?
Oh, yes, sir. Meron, sir. Nabanggit sir ni honorable Congressman Billy Ferte, 'yung sa Event Chance. That time, your honor, I was the provincial manager of Event Chance Gaming Corporations in Camarinisur, March 2010 to February 2011, your honor. During the time, when I was the, when I was sir the provincial manager, marami na sir ano, marami na sir mga ano doon. Tama po si, ano, si Congressman Billy Ferte na, ginagamit lang po talaga ng, ng ano, ng AAC, 'yung permit nila para mag-wetting. Actually po, ng mga panahon na yun, when I was the general, ah, the provincial manager, dalawa po ang sistema nila dyan eh. 'Yung pong ano, 'yung pong, ah, ah, koleksyon, hinahati po nila 'yan sa tatlo. Tatlo po, tatlong ano 'yan, tatlong portion.
At the time, who owned the Event Chance? Because you were provincial manager, sino'y may-ari ng Event Chance?
It was, it was Rodolfo Bong Pineta po, your honor.
Siya mismo 'yung-
Siya po 'yung cau-
Licensee?
Siya po, siya po, siya po.
Pero sino mismo 'yung in charge aside from you?
Ah, si kuapo, si, ang directly, ah, kuapo, ah, upper ko po si, ano, si Mr. Nestor Napa. Kasi po, 'yung ano, 'yung pong, ah, area ng, ah, Bicol at saka Visayas, siya po ang, ano, siya po ang pinaka-area, ah, pinaka-area supervisors.
Mr. Nestor Napa is also a front of, sorry for the word, ah, front of Bong Pineta?
Yes, po. Siya po ang may awa.
'Yung sinasabi mong Visayas, ah, several parts of Bicol, Bong Pineta talaga ang operator.
Opo, siya po, siya po.
And you know this as a matter of fact, ano?
Totoo po 'yan.
With your personal knowledge? Sino 'yung, ikaw mismo ang kausap ni Bong Pineta? Nakausap mo ba siya?
Hindi po. Ang talaga po nga, naging kausap ko po dyan, si, ah, kuwan, si Tata Ure. 'Yung pong, ano, 'yung pong, ah, biyana ni Mr. Angelo Pinera. Kapatid po na punso ni Bong Pinera. Siya po ang nag-introduce sa akin dyan.
Yeah, sige.
So, nung panahon po na yun, nasabi po sa akin ni Tata Ure, sabi niya, oh, sabi niya, okay ka ba kung, ano, kung hawakan mo ikaw niyong camsur, bubuksan ni, ano 'yan, bubuksan ni kanya ni Doce? Sabi niya ni Bong. Sabi ko, okay po. So, ah, pumunta kami kay ano, kay Angelo, pinakilala niya ako, tinanggap ako, and then nag-proceed kami ng kuwan, ng Camarinisur. Doon, doon ko na po na-meet si Mr. Nestor Napa. Siya po ang, kumbaga sa, pinaka-immediate supervisor ko. Ang hinahuwakan po ni Mr. Napa during the time is, sa area po ng Bicol at saka ng Visayas, is Camarinisur, Sur Sogon at saka Leyte Sur. Nagkaroon po ng instance na gustong ilipat sa akin ni Nestor Napa, 'yung ano, 'yung Sur Sogon, at ah, medyo malaki nga, magko-concentrate na lang sa spainot, pero hindi ko po tinanggap.
Anyway, sige, proceed to the meat of the discussion. Papano 'yung actual operation ng STL say in Camarinisur and Sur Sogon kung alam mo? Camarinisur first-
Gano'n po, wala, wala, wala pong pagbabago.
Kaya nga, papanong operation noon? Papano nadadaya ang PCSO? Papano nadadaya ang gobyerno?
Okay po, asandali lang po.
Mr. Chair, habang naghaantay, ah, can I, can I just ask one question?
Yes, your honor.
Ah, Mr. Chair, ah, you, you mentioned before that Bong Pineta was operating in Sur Sogon, is that correct?
Yes, po.
And we have reports also that currently, that in Sur Sogon, ah, it's still Bong Pineta. So just for the, for the reference, Mr. Chair of the PCSO, that is against the IRR, that's against the law, dummy, using dummies. And there are already strong intelligence reports validated that even in Sur Sogon and other parts of the country, it's still Bong Pineta operating. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you confirm kasi last time, di ba 'yung Camarinisur, sinabi ni Congressman Billy Ferte, kinonfirm dyan o binahalid din ang provincial director ng Camarinisur, 5 million a day, hindi ba?
Opo, opo.
At the time, 2010, magkano 'yung, ah, 'yung, ah, 'yung gross dyan sa Camarinisur?
Ang Camarinisur, ah, during my term, your honor, ah, it was 5 million po, excluding, ah, excluding ka, Naga.
How much sa Naga?
Sa Naga po, ah, as far as I remember, is 1.8 million.
Ngayon ba Naga, is Naga included in the Camarinisur area for purposes of management or AAC? He walay.
Mr. Chair, she is lying, because the agreement as per, ah, certification from PCSO that Event Chance was granted the franchise for province of Camarinisur and Naga City. Ah, Mr. Chair, I just like, hindi ko po maiswian kung bakit mismo 'yung AGM, hindi niya alam.
Alam mo ba, oh, you're just lying? Included pala. So ang total ng Camarinisur ngayon, including Naga, would be 6.8 million a day. And ang nirerimit sa inyo, 61 million na a month, di ba 'yan sa PMRR? Huh? So magkano daily? 2 million? Not even? Magkano daily, on a daily basis, kung sa daily natin i-compute? Magkaanong remittance or as per PMRR? Magkaanong nagge-generate, ano 'yung grocery receipts sa Camarinisur, including Naga City? Sige, in the meantime, Mr. Bago, continue.
Ganito po 'yung ano, ganito po 'yung ano, 'yung racket ng, ano, ng Event Chance sa, ano, sa Camarinisur and also in all other provinces, no? Nueva Ecija, Bulacan.
Yes, ito 'yung mga provinces na sinasabi mo, underdined sa operasyon ni Mr. Bong Pineta.
Opo, Nueva Ecija.
So, ano, ano 'yan?
Yes, your honor. During my, during my, ano, during my term at the time, 2010, Nueva Ecija Province, Bulacan Province, Pampanga Province, Angel City, Bataan Province, Sambales Province, Olongapo City, Santiago City, Camarinisur Province, Sur Sogon Province and Leyte Sur Province.
So, and you know this as a fact, as a matter of fact?
Because, because I am part of the conferences, pagka nagmi-meeting-meeting ako kami sa bahay ni Mr. Angelo Pineta sa-
Si Ure?
Opo.
Nasaan na si Mang Ure ngayon?
Patay na po, 'yung matanda.
Siya 'yung biyana ng bosong kapatid ni Bong Pineta?
Opo, opo, opo.
Sige, continue.
So, ganito po 'yun.
I wish, teka-muna, I wish PCSO would listen to this narration. Kasi kung ganyan 'yung 2010, malamang, 'yan dinoperasyon ni Bong Pineta. Di ba? Nueva Ecija, Bulacan, of course, Pampanga, no brainer 'yan. So how could that happen? Kung gusto natin talagang magbigay ng, ah, honest to goodness or equal chance sa iba, to, ah, to be granted licenses to operate? Eh, kung isang tao lang, kontrolado kayo ng isang tao instead of the other way around? Sige, proceed.
Doon po sa, ano, sa ingreso ng STL, ganito po ang ginagawa na. Tatlo po 'yan, tatlo, tatlong hati-hati po 'yan. Ang nirerimit lang po talaga ng, ano, ng, ah, ng AAC, pero lahat po 'yan, may mga ID, kompleto po 'yan, may mga uniform. 'Yung isang, ano lang po, isang estasyon lang. There are three stations po, doon sa maliliit na bayan, pero doon sa malalaki, may five hanggang six stations, pero, dalawa lang po, meaning, sabi na natin, one-third lang po ang kuwan, ang, ang nirereport nila sa PCSO. The rest of the two-thirds, hindi po nila nirerimit 'yun. Ganito pa po ang isa. Ito po, sample ito ng, ano, ng ticket, ng, ano, ng pablitos ng, ah, ng, ah, Bong Pineta Corporations. Ito po.
Pablitos siya ng wetting o pablitos ng STL?
Wetting, ah, STL at saka wetting na rin po, parehas.
Paano mamabait istinkis 'yung alin dyan 'yung STL, alin 'yung wetting?
Ay, paliliwanag ko po.
Sige.
Eh, 'yan. Ito po. Pagkaantayahan niyo po ay 100 pesos. Ahatiin po 'yan, 20 or 80 pesos, 50 or 50 pesos, 30 or 30, ah, 70 pesos. Okay, sa 80 or 20 pesos, ano, isang, isang, isang ano po ito, 5 pesos and 20 pesos, okay? Another is 5 pesos and 20 pesos. Another is 5 pesos and 20 pesos. And ito po, itong apag na'to, pag may tama po, pag may tama, 'yun ang wetting. Ayun, 'yun po ang, ano, 'yung STL. Pag may tama, babayaran po lahat dyan, lahat po 'yan sa damit. Pero pag wala po tama, isa lang po ang ibibigay sa PCSO. 'Yung kadi la, 'yun ang wetting. 'Yun na. 'Yan po ang sistema.
Hindi 30%, 20% ang ibibigay sa PCSO?
Ah, madal po si ko, maybe po.
Kung wala tama?
Kung wala tama po, po.
Kasi pag may tama-
Wala, wala po. Pagka wala tama, pupunin ng wetting.
Okay.
Oh, pagka may tama, idibigay po sa PCSO.
Paano nagbabola?
Ah, ang pagbabola naman po, eh, 'yun na nga po ang problema dito. Kasi kung minsan, ah, I overheard, ah, I overheard, ilipat din niyo 'yang, ano, ilipat din niyo 'yang, ano, 'yung dro, 'yung bulahan, drokort. Sabi, nangyari po ito sa, ano, sa Camarinisur. Sabi ko, ah, Nestor, sabi ko, pa tililipat dyan. Sabi ko, ay, samantalong nga, nandito 'yung kuwan, ano 'yung mga, ano, sabi ganyan. Eh, gumiti lang siya, pagka tapos idilipat. Ganito po ang ginagawa nila dyan. Itinatago po nila 'yung bulahan. Tapos itini-text na lang po nila kung ano 'yung gusto nilang palabasin. Depende doon sa report, sa baba, sa ground, kung ano 'yung malaki at kung ano 'yung maliit.
So, computerized?
Computerized po 'yun.
Alam nila ngayon, 'yung trend ang taya, kung ano 'yung numero, o kombinasyon na maraming taya, hindi na patatamain.
Hindi nila patatamain 'yun.
So niloloko nila 'yung mga tao.
Naloloko po talaga.
Check, Miss Kinay, I'd like to-
Mr. Chair.
Sandali, sige po. Sir Ang, would you like to-
Ah, your honor, baka mga dagdag dito sa, ano, unang-una, pinag-uusapan natin 11 provinces, kung ibang Pineta, I think mas maganda katabog natin si Bong Pineta rito. Kung itatanggi niya ko siya may-ari, isa suggestion lang po 'yun. Second, 'yung, ah, pareho nga na sinasabi ko na, itong mga nag-ooperate ng wetting, saka itong mga nag-ESL, magkukumpare kami, magkakarid ka kami. Ang totoong nayari dyan, etong lahat na binabayaran nila to, hindi to actual sales. Kasi binigyan na nga ng quota to dati, no? Pero, ah, 7.5% ngayon, ginawa ng 15 to 20%. So, 'yung kung ano man ang din-declare ng PCSO ngayon, hindi to toong sales 'yan. Lahat ng operasyon nila ngayon, wetting 'yun. Babalik ko ulit, sabi ko na, walang wetting eh. Wetting, lahat ng actual operation, wetting 'yun. Kung ano 'yung naandito, na ina, na din-declare kila kabuyo, 'yan 'yung ginagawa nila na accountant nila, walang kinalaman sa operation 'yun. Eh, eh, kaya, sinasurka ko na rin sinasabi niyo eh. So, walang kinalaman ng actual operation, kung ano lang dinikta ng mga, kung sino 'yung GM na, kung sino 'yung corrupt dyan. O eto ka, etong uta mo, tapos basta bigyan mo akong sobra. Ganun po ang nayari. So walang kinalaman sa operation, your honor.
Sir Bago, kung meron dayaan, natural, may korapsyo na kasama. Kasi alangan namang papayagan ng PCSO, papayagan ng, kung sino mang nasa gobyerno na halos hayagan, harap-harapan na may dayaan, nang wala namang sila papakinabang.
Totoo po 'yan, totoo po 'yan.
So, sige, mag-segway kayo, ano ngayon ang kalakaran, ano ba 'yung lagayan? Ah, alam niyo ba ito, 'yung lagayan?
Ah, nung panahon po, na nandun ako-
Panahon niyo?
Panahon ko lang po ha, pwede po, oh, sa Camarinisur, saka Camarinisur. Ah, sa camsur, camsur, okay. Ang, ah, lagayan po dito, eh, individual na kakausapin po 'yung tao. Halimbawa, mayor, police, ganyan, sila po 'yung pupuntahan. Kahit na po madaling araw, kahit na po sa pulo ng mangga, mag-uusap po 'yan, mag-aabutan na po doon. Ganun po. So, sasabihin, magkaanong akin, okay, porsyento po 'yun. So 'yung porsyento na para sa kanila, kinukuha na po 'yun. Meaning, kung halimbawa po, sa police, may 1% sila, sample lang po, sa 100,000.
Una, 'yung sinasabi mong 1%, labas ito doon sa, ah, 'yung deklaro na share ng police?
Labas po 'yun, labas po 'yun. Iba po 'yun.
Okay, PCSO, sinong kinakahausap?
Ah, ang kinakahausap po, nung panahon namin po, eh, si Director Rakiniones. Na-meet ko na po 'yan. Minsan, pumunta po 'yan sa Camarinisur.
Sige, pag-pirma ng lisensya, magkano? Tapos 'yung regular, 'yung monthly, magkano?
Ah, wala po akong alam sa Prankisa kung magkano ang binibigay sa Prankisa.
Hindi ka nakausap ni, ni Angelo o ni Nestor tungkol dyan? Sino ang umaral?
Wala po, wala po.
So, ang kausap doon si Bong Pineta?
Si Bong Pineta lang po, opo.
So ikaw, provincial manager, wala ka malang kalam-alam kung magkano 'yung, syempre, expense 'yan eh? Lapas ka doon?
Lapas po ako doon dahil hindi ko po alam kung magkano inaabot ni Bong Pineta sa PCSO.
Oh, sige, tuloy mo 'yung salisay.
Maliban na lang po 'yung mga pagbisita ng mga board of directors, 'yun pwede ko po sabihin 'yun. Ah, minsan po, ang akala ko, piripili ako na, nagpapili ng, ano, 'yung cesto, ano 'yung cesto box. Akala ko po, eh, magmimeryenda kami, sabi may bisita, bumili ka ng isang cesto. 'Yung pong cesto box, di ginawa, meryenda. Eh, pinatawag po 'yung kahero namin, eh, 'yung palang cesto, eh, plant lang 'yun. 'Yung palang box, 'yung nalalagyan ng pera. Kaya nun, dumating po si Director Kinyones, ganun na nga po.
Regular ba 'yung pagbisita o random?
Regular po 'yun, weekly, ah, monthly po, kung minsan, twice a month pa.
Magbibisita 'yung board? Ilan members ng board ang nagbibisita?
Ang, ah, na, panahon ko lang po nun, si Director Rakiniones.
Magkano laman 'yung cesto?
500,000 po.
Sa isang buwan?
Ah, hindi ko po alam kung sa isang buwan 'yun dahil la, minsan, sa ho ka po, ah.
Di ba cheap 'yun?
Ah?
Di ba cheap masyado?
Eh, baka po para sa kanya lang 'yun. Hindi ko po alam.
Anyway, sige, tuloy mo lang 'yung salisay mo. Para maliwan agan mabuti na dito 'yung, ito mga bago, ito mga members ng board. When you were there, they were not yet there, di ba? Wala pa sila sa PCSO. Mas maganda 'yung bigyan mo sila ng background, so they would know how to address or to how to confront or how to, ah, solve, ah, the problem. Sige.
So, ah, meron pa akong, ano, meron po akong mga bagay-bagay na gusto sanang ipalad sa PCSO. Tulad po 'yung, ah, 'yung tungkol sa ano, tungkol doon sa, sa ano, sa, nabanggit po ni, ano, nabanggit po ni Chairman, ano, Chairman, ah, ano ni, ano, ni honorable Congressman Billy Ferte. 'Yun tungkol po sa paggamit ng, ano, ng mobile handheld terminal. Well, ah, pwede po sanang magamit 'yun, pero ang problema po doon kasi, 'yung, ah, sales supervisors po natin saka mga sales representatives all over the nation, eh, 1.2 to 1.5 million individuals, computed na po 'yan. So magkakaroon po talaga ng problema dyan. Pangalawa po, kung, kasi po, 'yung bibigay natin 'yan sa mga kubrador, syempre, tangay-tangay po nila 'yan eh. Tangay-tangay nila 'yan, masisira lang po, masisira lang po 'yun. Ngayon, 'yung ticket po, okay lang 'yun. Ang suggestion ko po sa PCSO, na pinag-usapan din namin noon ni General Baluta, sabi ko, why not, 'yun na lang, ano, 'yun na lang, ah, ah, kuwan, 'yung, ah, post o tinatawag na, ano, 'yung pong, ah, permanent na naka-stationary, stationary na, ano, na machine. Sabi ko, 'yung ginamit namin kaako ng, sa Bingo Millionaire sa Romblon, sabi ko. 'Yun, lahat ng mga koleksyon, pumapasok doon, tapos may mga ticket. 'Yung mga ticket talaga ibigay natin sa mga, ano, sa mga, sa mga, ano, sa mga kubrador. Tapos, 'yun na lang ang total po 'yung kinukuha lahat, recorded po 'yun. Okay, so pangalawa po, na pwedeng, ano, 'yung pong, ah, sa ano, sa, sinasabi ko nga po, 'yung, ano, 'yung sa, ah, pag-kolekta po ng unpaid at saka unremitted na PCSO revenues, lalo na po 'yung sa PMR. Basahin po ninyo 'yung, ano, 'yung IRR ng, ano, ng 2016. There is no tax or any provisions regarding to prejudicial or without prejudicial. Doon sa mga AACs, para habulin natin sila, kung paano natin makukolekta 'yan. Wala pong nakalagay doon eh, wala pong nakalagay na paraan o procedure or safety net or measures, paano?
Would you like to respond to that observation? Na wala, wala namang provision, kung papano niyo hahabulin 'yung, 'yung mga AACs? But first, 'yung kanina, 'yung naiwa nating tanong, magkano 'yung-
Average, average po ng 1.298 million, daily po.
And that's Camarinisur including Naga City, 1.298 million?
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
0.298 million po.
1.298?
Opo.
Mr. Chair, kasi that's misleading eh. Mr. Chair, 'yung-
Mister Chair, kasi that's misleading eh. Mister Chair, 'yung basis niyan na yan, is based on 'yung latest remittance siguro as of November, December? Can you say?
December po.
Kasi Mister Chair, I computed po, when they started operating from March as, as of November, ang naremit pa lang nila sa PCSO is one hundred thirty-nine million, seven nine six zero four six, or a shortfall of over a billion pesos, for a, for a period of only eight, eight to nine months, Mister Chair. So, 'yung sinasabi niyang basis, na one million per day, yun siguro 'yung latest ano niya, latest ah, remittance. Because when the congressional hearing started in Congress, tumas na 'yung remittance niya. But, kung iwasasain mo, when they started operating March, ah, hundred fifty thousand lang yata naremit, Mister Chair eh. So, what I'm saying is, in addition to the IRR, ah, finer fit nila 'yung bond, terminate, finer fit. But, ah, ang sag, ang tanong ko po, Mister Chair, is, paano naman 'yung shortfall? Na, you know, one year sila nagshortfall every month, isingilin ba niyo sa kanila yan? Kasi as per the IRR, kailangan singilin yan. And ah, going back, Mister Chair, ah, dapat hindi na nga pinapatagal ng more than two, three months, kung nagpa-violate na sila ng PMRR. Kasi lalong nadedeford po 'yung gobyerno, Mister Chair. So, dapat kinahin po sa IRR. Although, maliin ako naman, hindi lang ini-implement, aside from ah, termination for non-failure to remit the PMRR, for feature of bond, and third, 'yung shortfall should be paid, because there's a contract, is that correct, Mister Chair?
Sir, actually po, 'yung tanong po kasi kanina, 'yung average sales po. Average sales po, eh, 'yung naging basis po namin, 'yung last December po.
Paki-clarify, kasi kung if you will do an average sales from March until December, it's less than one million.
December, tapos backward?
Man po ng December lang po, sir.
Eh, hindi average yun, hindi average. Go back probably, hanggang ah, June, June to December, anong average daily?
Sir, pa-kumpit ko lang po, sir.
Eh, hindi average 'yung one point two nine eight?
Sir, actin' po sir, 'yung December, yun po 'yung average niya ng per day, for the month of ano po. Opo, sir, kasi 'yung kanina, 'yung tanong po, 'yung per day po.
Sorry. Mister Chairman, would like to hear from you, with all these ah, issues, all these ah, problems.
Sir, ah, the, the, the problem really here is accountability. I noticed... Tubig, tubig mo na. I noticed that, ah, there's no accountable retail receipts. And always, the police will be always if they have water. Because they have no receipt, bad receipt, that is authorized by PCSO, that will hold water in court. So, the board now decided, and is still on progress, to design an accountable official retail receipts, so that when ah, the police will apprehend, in a, an airing battle or cabo, using an official receipt, it will also, it will, it will be automatically be prima facie evidence, that will hold water in court. And ah, in our discussion, that, that accountable official retail receipts will be issued by PCSO. So, from there, we can now account, an audit, an AAC of the real income, for, for the month, or for the day.
Kasi ngayon, Sirang, makikita mo, 'yung AAC, siya lang 'yung magdi-decide kung ano 'yung income niya. So, what, the PCSO cannot audit him, kasi siya 'yung gumagawa ng recebo. So, ngayon, sabi nga sa aming discussion, ang failure talaga dito is control. So, paano natin malaman, natuto talaga itong mga PMRR na sinanahabi nila. So, yun sir, yun ngayon ang aming... Chairman, 'yung paggamit ng unauthorized receipts, ano, 'yung mga pampilitos?
Yes, sir.
Should that be a ground for outright termination of contract, because that's defrauding the government, or defrauding the PCSO? Di ba dapat ground ka agad yun? Pag nahulihan 'yung kubrador nila, 'yung kolektor nila, nang hindi authorized na ah, napapilitos from PCSO, di ba dapat automatic yun? Wala na maraming usapan?
I think there is part of the...
Ano to ah, hindi kasama 'yung criminal ah, charges that could be filed later on. But ah, sa side lang na PCSO, pag may report 'yung ah, PFP sa inyo na may nahulihan, 'yung particular operator, whose kubadores are using ah, unauthorized receipts, di ba dapat ah, terminate, termination ka agad yun? Of course, there's due process involved, but that should be a ground for termination, di ba? Are you doing that now? Hindi, wala?
Actually, sir, ah, we are amending our IRR, and ah, one of the actions taken there is to have a, an accountable official retail receipts.
Yes, actually, ah, dahil ah, Your Honors, 'yung ah, well upon reviewing 'yung IRR, we noticed that um, there are some loose provisions, because ah, AACs were all, also allowed to print their own receipts. So, it's either the P, ah, the PCSO would provide the receipts, or the ah, the AAC can provide. That's why napag-usapan ho namin during our last meeting, that this should be ah, discontinued. That's why we want to amend the implementing rules, that only the PCSO should be the one to provide the, the receipts to all AACs.
But, but it should be charged to the AACs, di ba?
Yes.
Dapat kasama 'yung sa remittas nila, 'yung forms na, ah, pinudus ng PCSO, pinitang PCSO, and distributed to them, para wala silang magawa, na sila mismo nagpi-print, kasi otherwise, pipick lang nila 'yung pini-print nila. Kasi sila nakakakilala, and should be uniform all over. Ngayon ba hindi uniform? Kanya-kanyang form?
Actually, sir, we, we provided them, 'yung ah, STL prescribed form po, and then they were allowed to print. But now po, meron na po, kung aming, approved na po ng board, na it's the PCSO who will print now the accountable forms.
And charge to them?
And then secondly, ah, tama po 'yung sabi ni Congressman Eldray, meron mga ibang AACs na naiitunan, because of 'yung ah, non-remittance or short remittance ng kanilang PMRR. That's why, in fact, ah, we, we have already lined up a couple of ah, of ah, of AACs to be terminated. Inisa-isahan na po namin, hindi lang namin mapagsabay-sabay, dahil ah, baka pinagsabay-sabay namin, eto wala pang guidelines, which was also suggested, we said, ah, what this presentation suggested, that because, because of this incident, to review all the ah, the performance of the AACs, ah, AACs, and lahat ng may, may mga malalaking, ah, may mga short, ah, shortfall of non-remittance, eh, pagpadala na namin ng notice of ah, termination. But of course, we also have to provide a guideline on how to ah, to, to come up with ah, replacements of ah, this ah, these operators na ite-terminate ho natin.
Chairman?
Sir, ah, we have prepared a, if our point presentation, of our actions taken, of your guidance.
Please, would you like to say that?
Our legal officer, I thought each young will brief.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair? Yes, sir. Ah, point of clarification, may Congressman Espino and myself be allowed to interpolate also?
Of course.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Your colleague here has been interpolating since the last hearing, so, I see no reason why the two of you won't be able to interpolate also.
Mister Chair, ah, I saw it on TV that you, ah, asked the permission of the members of the committee for our colleague here to interpolate the...
It's still the stance, Your Honor, because this is just a resumption of that hearing, so, it's already covered.
Thank you for the privilege, Mister Chair.
Good morning, Mister Chairman and members of the committee. Today, we will present the issues raised and actions taken by the PCSO board, ah, on the issues ah, during the meeting of January twenty-four, two thousand eighteen. First slide please. Oh. Yes. Ay. The third, the third. Yes, ah, next slide please. First, we have a brief introduction, um, issues raised, number three, the, the actions taken, and the challenges of PCSO. Can kindly go back to the first slide? Yes. The Committee on Games and Amusement Joint with the Committees of Government Corporations and Public Enterprises in Ways and Means had a joint public hearing on January twenty-four, two thousand eighteen. Several issues were raised in the operations of STL, one of the regular games of PCSO. The first issue is the evaluation of operations of STL AACs. In the recent meeting of the board, the members of the Board of Directors approved the for feature of cash bond of five AACs in operation that failed to attain their proposed presumptive monthly retail receipts. We, we beg your indulgence, we cannot divulge the names of the AACs yet, because they have not been informed, because um, the approval, um, the resolution is yet to be um, signed by the board. Second, alleged violations of Even Chance Gaming Corporation. Um, the board has also approved the termination of authority to operate STL in Camarinisur of Even Chance Gaming Corporation, and the for feature of its cash bond, cash bond to answer for the shares due to PCSO. Um, in relation to this, PCSO issued a notice to explain, directing Even Chance to comment on why its authority to operate STL in the province, province of Camarinisur should not be revoked. PCSO also requested the comments of our branch office to verify the allegations against Even Chance. And we also requested the Police Regional Director of Legaspi, Police Regional Director Antonio Gargiola to conduct a surveillance and independent investigation on the alleged illegal gambling activities in Camarinisur, and effect arrest in case of violations of any. Um, in the letter received by PCSO from PRD Gargiola, we were furnished a copy of the results of the investigation. They recommended the cancellation of Even Chance's authority, as it has committed the following violations, as alleged by Congressman Villaferte. Finally, based on the deliberation of the SMG, Even Chance failed to comply with the required PMRR of sixty-one million, eight hundred fifty-seven pesos a month. The sales performance report of branch operations secretary deals, that the actual sales of Even Chance is only one hundred seventy-eight million plus, therefore a shortfall of three hundred ninety-eight million plus. Next issue, issue of the failure to monitor sales of STL AACs. The PCSO board approves the use of official STL tickets and receipts to be printed and kept exclusively by the PCSO. Next, is a lack of coordination with the LGUs. In the recent board meeting, the board approved the requirement to secure a certificate of no objection to operate STL in the area of line four, issued by the governor in the province, or mayor in case of chartered city. This is to address the issue of lack of coordination with LGUs. So again, the PCSO approved the requirement to secure a certificate of no objection to operate STL in the area of line four, issued by the governor in case of the province, and mayor in case of the chartered cities. And, um, as mentioned a while ago, there are um, several challenges that PCSO is now confronted with, one of which is the effect of Train Law or Republic Act one zero nine six three. In the Train Law, PCSO's documentary stamp tax is increased from ten percent to twenty percent. Thus, will have a significant decrease in, will have an effect of decreasing the PCSO charity fund and prize fund. Um, we therefore recommend and we respectfully request the chairman of the committee to consider in the Senate Bill fourteen seventy, creating the Philippine Charity Lottery Office, the retention of the ten percent documentary stamp tax for PCSO, and the retention of PCSO's previous exemption from corporate income tax. That's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Members of the board, how much cash bond was forfeited from Even Chance? Fifteen million or?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one.
So, kung three hundred ninety-eight 'yung shortfall, paano niya habulin ngayon 'yung ah, more than three hundred million?
Yung sales shortfall po, sir, ang basis po namin nung pagka-forfeit ng cash bond, 'yung amount to be remitted to the PCSO. So, I still don't have the confirmation right now.
From the briefing, three hundred ninety-eight million ang shortfall eh, di ba, attorney? Sabi niyo kanina, if I heard you correctly, three hundred ninety-eight million 'yung shortfall, do'sa share. Share dapat ng PCSO, from Even Chance, and yet you forfeited a bond of sixty-one or sixty-four million?
Sir, as per our computation, ah, the amount to be remitted to PCSO would be hundred fifty-six point seventy-two million.
Sabi niyo, ano 'yung three hundred ninety-eight na binanggit po kanina, na shortfall? Gross shortfall?
Opo. Sales shortfall po, sales shortfall.
Sales shortfall, pero 'yung actual na dapat i-remit sa PCSO would be one hundred...
Hundred fifty-six point seventy-two million.
And how much cash bond was forfeited?
Sixty-one po.
O, anong, anong nangyari do'sa differential?
Sir, ah, we will collect po.
How will you collect kung tinetermine niyo na? Wala kayong bond eh? Punta kayo sa korte?
Yes, sir, 'yung legal po namin, sir, ang magde-demand ng collection, sir.
Mister Chair, can I add? May na instance in the past na nakakolecta kayo do'sa terminated AAC, ng shortfall? Wala?
Wala po, sir.
So, anong cure? From, from any member of the board, anong, anong cure, anong remedy, para hindi malugi 'yung PCSO? Kasi kung mali 'yung bond, vis a vis ah, the shortfall, paano niya habulin niyo, kung terminated na nga?
Should be, sir, ano, automatic ah, termination po once, na hindi po narerealize ka agad yun, ano?
Hindi nga eh, terminated na nga after your board meeting last January thirty-one. You approved in the board determination of 'yung AAC, di ba, 'yung Even Chance? Pero, finer fit niyo 'yung bond, sabi niyo, ah, sixty, ah, what's, one hundred plus? Oh, sixty-one million?
Mister Chair, can I add? Kasi 'yung bond ng Even Chance, nagsisinungaling na naman po sila eh. Ang bond po ng ah, ng Even Chance, as per the records you gave us, is only fifty-seven million, not sixty-one. It's fifty-seven million, six two six, two two five, as per O R number two one three five six one. So, Mister Chair, 'yung gusto ko lang po i-point out, kasi 'yung dinadrive po niyo po, kung sinunod lang sana ng PCSO, 'yung IRR, na pag hindi nami po 'yung PMRR, ipofortfit 'yung bond, then ire-replenish po. Ang ginawa nila, kung hindi pa kami nagcomplain, hindi na naidetermine, hindi na forfeit ngayon, hindi ba na-replenish? And there are, there are ah, more than ninety AACs right now, who are not complying with the PMRR. So, two things, either you forfeit that, or ask them to replenish. If he just followed IRR, and eto, hindi, hindi, hindi na-insure ang gobyerno. Saka Mister Chair, gusto ko lang pong tanungin, kasi 'yung dati kong tanong, na may formula po sila, na population times thirty percent, times two fifty, times three draws. Kung sinunod po nila yun, ang PMRR ng Camarinisur is one hundred thirty million plus. Ah, ang tanong ko po, Mister Chair, bakit nila binaba on their own, arbitrarily, with no legal basis? Nasa sixty-one po, ah, pwede bang masagot po yun, ah, Mister Chair? Thank you.
Sir, ang nangyari po kasi, sir, 'yung formula po ng PCSO, do'n po yun sa mga eighteen old AACs, ito pong mga bago na, ano po, na approve po. Kung ano po 'yung proposed PMRR po nila, yun po 'yung sinunod po ng PCSO, not the PCSO PMRR po.
So, balikan ko lang po, ah, Mister Chair, apparently talaga ang magkakaroon... So, balikan ko lang po, Mr. Chair, apparently talaga ang magkakaroon ng masyadong mataas ang liway ng board. Kasi dun sa Camarines Sur, as mentioned earlier po, anima nagbid. Meron dun nagbid STEM Gaming, 350 million, ang ano nila, PMRR. Ang sabi ni General Balutan, eh, ano lang naman 'yan, imposible naman 'yan. Pero, Mr. Chair, kung inaward nila sa PMRR 'yan at hindi naka-meet, may 350 million ang gobyerno? Automatic, then ipabit nila ulit sa iba hanggang tumamay 'yung numero. Pero, ang nangyari po, nagpa-bor po sila sa Even Chance like others, tapos unilaterally, kung ano 'yung sinabing, ang Even Chance po ang pinakamababang PMRR, sila ang nanalo. And I feel this is happening all over the country to the detriment of injury to the government, Mr. Chair. So, my point, hindi lang po Even Chance in Camarines Sur, all over the country, this is happening po.
Related question. How many months ba bago niya terminate? 'Yung one-month shortfall, would that suffice to terminate and forfeit, di ba?
As per IRR po.
One month?
Opo.
Eh, ba't tumagal lang ganun ka lang, ba't umabot na 309, ah, ng, 'yan?
Sir, I'm regularly submitting a report to the board, previously headed by Chairman Porpus, but sir, hindi po naging ganun po 'yung decision po nila to terminate immediately.
Mr. Chair, apparently hindi lang po 'yung board ang may negligence mismo sa branch, kasi sa IRR, nakasabi po, within five days that they have not met the PMRR, they should have reported within five days, not one month, not 10 months, not one year. So, 'yung ano po negligence, Mr. Chair, starting from the ground up, parang nagbulagbulaga, nagbingibingihan, even up to this date. Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang po i-point out, kasi I have the opportunity, na kinansin nila at inerminate ng board ang Even Chance sa Camarines Sur. And yet, nung niread na po ng PNP, Mr. Chair, 'yung operation, ngayon, ang kinatasuhan pa, pinapa-explain, 'yung pulis. Samantahan lang, sinabi po ng PCSO before, wala kami enforcement power. Nung in-enforce na po nila, 'yung termination, 'yung branch manager mismo ng PCSO nag-certify, "Mr. Chair, I will put it on record", na hindi pa pwedeng pahintuin 'yan, kasi wala pang, wala pang advice raw sa kanila. Ito po, Mr. Chair, if I let allow me to read, ito ang ginamit ng Even Chance, signed by Joe P. Ramos, OIC Branch Manager. "This is to certify that PCSO Camarines Sur Branch has not received any directive from the main office as of this day, February 7, 8, regarding the termination or cancellation of authority granted the Even Chance Gaming Corporation to operate small-town lottery in province of Camarines Sur." Ito po 'yung pinakita nila. Nag-lawyer pa, nag-lawyer pa po ang PCSO in favor of Even Chance. At papakita ko rin po mamaya, na despite the order of the board, tuloy-tuloy ang operation ng Even Chance. At, Mr. Chair, meron dalawang empleyado pa ng PCSO na huli namin nasa loob ng Even Chance nung February 8, despite the fact na January 31, 31, tinerminate niyo, nandun pa ang PCSO mismo. Nag-i-illegal, nagbewetting. Mr. Chair, I have it on record, I have pictures to show you, na mismo PCSO, dalawang empleyado ng PCSO. Ito po, nandun mismo po. Ito po, Mr. Chair, dito 'yung picture nila. Illegal na 'yung operation, pinuprotektahan pa niyo, tapos bago pasukin ang pulis, oy, hindi kayo pwedeng pumasok dito, legal pa 'to. Gusto ko lang po i-point out, despite the fact na tinerminate na, illegal naman 'yan from the start eh. Kasi, 'yun na nga, pabilitos, ganyan. So, Mr. Chair, kawawa po ang pulis, nandito po ang PD namin, pinapa-explain po ng higher-ups ng PNP na ginawa lang po niya ang trabaho. So, kasama ko po dito si Congressman Apo, si Congressman Espino, 'yan ang issue sa Congress nun, na kawawa ang pulis. Pag hindi nag-action, kakasuhan, pag nag-action, kakasuhan. So, ito 'yung mga bagay po in aid of legislation po na possibly naayusin po natin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Meantime, Mr. Chair, acknowledge the presence also of Mr. Julian Olivares of Ramloids Corporation Laguna, Steel Operator, Anastasio Inonsilio Bulakan. Andyan po kayo. And then, Mr. Jexter Mercado, Negro Occidental. May namago po sa inya. Board.
Sir, with, uh, in reply to the statement of Congressman Willy Fette, I think kaya lang, andun 'yung ano, because as I mentioned earlier, there's five days for them to file a motion for the consideration. Because the implementing rules is silent, kung immediately executory, 'yung notice of termination on the board. But because of 'yung, we have to provide due process, I think that's the rationale of the framers of the IRR, to provide the due process. So, hindi pa who nagla-lapse 'yung five days, that's why they were still operating. But if you also notice, kagaya ko lang sinabi ko, tama naman 'yung sinabi ni Kong. Ngayon ho, hindi na namin pinapatagal pag may lapse. In fact, during the last board meeting, ngayon 'yung pinakamataming termination ng decision to terminate AAC, based dun sa non-compliance with the PMRR. In fact, 'yung lima, una lang 'yan eh. Madami pa kaming, during the next board meeting, we already discussed 'yung mga dapat naisunod pang padalan ho ng notice of termination.
Okay, if I may add, Mr. Chair, alam, hindi naman po ako abogado. You mentioned that silence sa batas, but alam niyo na nag violate, alam niyo na nag-illegal. You can have an execution pending appeal, and based on jurisprudence, if there's compelling circumstances present, you can already halt terminate pending appeal, then if at a later stage you think that your action is wrong, then let him continue. But there is already compelling superior circumstance, such as continued injury to the government coffers, continued failure to protect public interest, permission of existing violation, potential continued violation of laws and other penal provisions. So, since you already mentioned it was silent, you are in a position to act?
Yes, Mr. Your Honor. As I mentioned, I'm not justifying the actions of whoever issued the order. As far as the board is concerned, during the board meeting, we passed a resolution for the cancellation, for the termination. Ang sinasabi ko lang, kaya siguro hindi, andun 'yung dalawang empleyado ng PCSO because 'yung mandatory five days na alam nila.
There was, hindi pa final 'yung termination?
Opo, because of 'yung five days provided by Article 28 of the IRR.
Anyway, Mr. Ang, you were quoted as hearing a challenge sa PCSO that you can produce the 200 million daily income, di ba, 'yung gross?
Yes, Your Honor.
And how would you do that?
Well, I think, eto, may paliwala ko rin to ano pa. 'Yung para makatulong din sa mga pinag-uusapan niyo po, as gaming consultant or as taon na sa akin, no? Ito ang PCSO, ang PCSO, kaya tayo walang problema dun sa loto, kasi actual sales 'yun. Minus prices, minus mga charity. So, actual sales, remaining 55% divided by how many tickets, sobra't ang problema. Ngayon, eto nga po ang story na tong, 'yung sweepstakes, okay, they successful 'yan. Kaya wala corruption nga, parang sinabi ko dati. Ngayon, dito po sa STL na 'to, gusto ko maintindihan niyo nila't, eh, maintindihin niyo maig ito. Wala kataposan'tong pinag-uusapan 'yung problema 'to. Kasi, dinisign alaga tong STL as failure. Okay, papaliwala ko kung bakit po. Nilabas po 'yan nung panahon ni Oriarte, dinisign niya nila po ang pinenda. Nung panahon ni Lord Oriarte. Kun titignan niyo 'yung sales, buong panahon ni Madame GMA, wala pa yatang 600 million ang gross. Tsaka, eto pa po pala, lagi pong sinasabi ng PCSO, palibas, sabi nila protection na nung una pa, lagi binabanggit niyo gross kayo ng gross. Bakit hindi niyo paliwala sa tao kung magkaroon lang ang charity? Kapareho, hangga't 2014, 'yun, Honor. Ang sales ng STL is 4.7 billion. Ang, sila na lahat na nag-invento niyan. Ang 7% lang kinukuha is 320 million net. 'Yung net na 'yun, 'yun lang napupunta sa charity. So, 'yung sinasabi nila 4.7, eh, pay 8 'yun eh. Kapareho ngayon, sinasabi na naman po nila Balutan, na umakit na how many billions, how many billions. Eh, totoong sales niyan, katulad niyan. Kasi, sila nagdidikta ng sales eh. Hindi actual, hindi actual talaga to, kapareho, inulit mo ho. Hindi na maikukoreto dahil nagsimula to sa dinikta. So, 'yung dinikta nila, actual sales, okay. 19, simula 1900, 1998, oh, 19, okay, 1990. Lahat ng sales niyan, mas kitanungin niyo lahat ng gambling lord, hindi nagbabago 'yan. 'Yung ma-experience, gusto niyo maalaman ng actual sales ng bawal probinsya? Wala kayong tatanungin, kung hindi governor, mayor, kasi tinutulungan nila mga tao nila eh. 'Yung mga pulis dyan, napalit naman ang palit. 'Yung mayor lang, governor, congressman, may idea na sila kasi may mga taohan sila na matatanong nila. So, kun-observahan niyo, bawal probinsya, simula 1990 hanggang ngayon, dapat mas mataas lang 'yan, more or less mga 10% lang. Ngayon, ang sales niyang pare-pareho. So, so 'yung ginagawa nila na, simula nung nilabas 'yung STL niya, para gawing fraud, naging presidentan, simula nung panahon ni Oriarte, naging corrupt na sobra ang PCSO. Ang maganda ngayon, kinokorek, kinokorek na ni Presidente ngayon eh. Kaya lang, walang way na maikorek dahil mali ang formula. Hindi makikita ang actual hangga't gambling lord na nagko-operate. Impossible, kapareho nga, ang actual sales. Alam naman nila Lisa Gabuyo 'yan eh, kayo, kayo, kayo magkasabot dati dyan eh. Kayo, kayo, nila Kenyones. Sila-sila 'yan, kaya so, paaikutin mo natin ang paaikutin niyan, Lisa. Kasi, pag ikinorekto, marami madadami dyan, makikita niyo. Mas 'yan ang gawin natin, uulitin ko. Dinisign 'yan as failure nung panahon ni Oriarte. Kaya nagkagulo na, nagkagulo 'yan, tapos nung pumasok si Pinoy naman, si Presidente Pinoy, three years pa lang sinabi na ni Presidente Pinoy na i-cancillan po, ginagamis sa kalokohan. Ano sabi nila, otsoa. Hindi po pwede, marami mahal na ng trabaho. Nakita ko sa ano niya, sa affidavit mo 'to eh, baliko, may alam ka rin. So, hindi na, hindi na naikorek, idalagay sana si Governor Malixi. Ilalagay ni Presidente, ang sinabi, hindi pwede, may kaso ka pa. 'Yun na sinabi nila, na mga, na mga malalakas si Presidente. Pinatapos agad, ngayon, nung nila, ang nakinabang buong panahon ni Presidente Pinoy, si Joe Rojas, siya nakipakdil lahat sa mga kalokohan niyan. Kasabot 'yung mga existing ngayon. So, siya, sabi ko lang, hindi na makukorekto, mas kitapag-usapan niya, napag-usapan. Dahil hindi naman totoo 'yung sales eh, hangga't may gambling lord, hindi na matatapos ang problema 'to. Bakit walang problema ang loto? Dahil actual sales. Eh, eto, kinukutahan niyo, oh, para lang sumigat si Balutan, doblehin 'yan. So, observahan niyo, kun 'yung actual sales, dinoblehin niyo lang. Kinuta niyo lang, may PMRR pa kayo, may number of voters.
Now, why is that? Let's address this issue sa board, no? Bakit hindi pwedeng PCSO magdidictate? Ito dapat ang papasok sa amin, hindi 'yung operator na nagdidictate, ito lang ang pwede naming pasok sa inyo. That's, that's the essence of what Mr. Ang was saying, di ba? And narinig ko rin kayo, Mr. Bago, di ba, ganun din eh. Sila na nagsasabi, eto lang 'yung para sa PCSO. Why is that? Kaya nga may PMRR, kaya nga meron kayong, di ba, 'yung control, 'yung control migration.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, totoo 'yun, grabe ang korruption sa higher-ups ng PCSO. At I just want to ask AGM Gabuyo to be honest and don't mislead this investigating body. Dahil, from the very start, alam niyo po, na itong STL, you're in cahoots with the GM. Whoever is the GMS, kung ikaw ang, nung panahon ni Joe Rojas, ikaw ang AGM nun, kasabot ka, lalong-lalo na ngayon, because it's only General GM Balutan and you. Kayo lang dalawang nagkakasundo dyan. Blinded po ang board at our newly appointed chairman, si Chairman Pinili, hindi din po niya alam, Mr. Chairman, kung anong nangyayari. But I'm telling you, Mr. Ms. Gabuyo, mayroon na po ng, nakarevi po ako sa anumang eventualities. May order na sa akin, kung anong dapat gawin sa inyo. Maging honesto ka lang sa pagsasagot at pagbibigay ng mga remittances since 2017, para hindi tayo magkagulo. Huwag ka nang magsinungaling, diretsuhin mo ang investigating body na 'to. Huwag mo kaming i-mislead, kasi marami na akong nakuha naipon, kung sino ka, at si GM Balutan.
Your Honor.
Congressman, na, ako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think if we look at the IRR, marami pong loopholes, there are so many loopholes. But I would like to ask the PCSO, how many times have you changed your IRR insofar as the STL operations are concerned?
I cannot exactly remember, sir, we have 2010, we have 2015, 2016, and 2017. Four times.
And may I ask, Mr. Chair, were these IRRs approved by the president pursuant to Section 10 of your charter?
No, sir.
And therefore, you have been operating with an IRR that was not approved in accordance with law? Siguro dun nanggagaling 'yung problema natin. Dahil pwedeng baliwalain niyo 'yung IRR, because it was never approved by the president, who was, or who is the approving authority pursuant to your charter? Tama po ba? Kasi binabaliwala niyo eh. Wala, walang approval na Presidente, but your law or your charter says that your IRR, your rules and regulations should be approved by the president. Tama?
Sir, I, it's the, I refer that, sir, to the legal department, sir.
So, among the four, three or four IRRs na revised or na amend, alin dun 'yung approved ng pangulo lang? Not even one? So, papano ah kayo?
Mr. Chairman, can I add po tungkol dun sa kay AGM Gabuyo? And I want her to be, to have it under oath, para hindi siya makapag-sinungaling. I have a memo.
Will you admit, Mr. George, not yet? First time kang nag, first time, contact, will you admit, Mr. George, to AGM Gabuyo? O, kasama na rin 'yung ano, 'yung sa mga AACs?
Ay, po, Bago.
Tapos na Buba kayo, 'yung, about the other two? Tapos na rin, oh, pakita 'yung dalawa. And Ms. Gabuyo.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this Senate inquiry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congressman Apo, please continue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. If we look at the IRR, there's no protocol insofar as determination of airing AACs are, is concerned. Wala po, I have read the IRR thrice already, wala eh. So, para bang they're not having this approved by the president simply because they want to do their own thing? 'Yun bang gusto nilang magawa 'yung, kung ano man 'yung gusto nila? Dahil walang fixed na approved na rules and regulations eh. Uh, that is precisely why they cannot terminate the Even Chance and Speed Game when they are similarly situated. We have brought this out in a House hearing insofar as this issue is concerned, Mr. Chair. And I have asked them that Speed Game and Even Chance are similarly located. They have the same violations. Why is it that Even Chance has been terminated and Speed Game has not yet been terminated? And they promised me that they would take these two together in the board meeting that they would have conducted after the hearing in the House of Representatives. But I do not know, Mr. Chair, if that board meeting pushed through. That is why I'm asking. Now, the other query that I have, Mr. Chair, is we go back to their, we go back to their mandate. May I ask the chairman, whoever is, who can answer this question, what is the mandate of PCSO? Pursuant to your charter? Kasi 'yun ang, 'yun dapat ang inyong guiding light eh. What is the mandate of PCSO?
Your Honor, well, the primary mandate is to raise funds for the health programs of the government and supervise the running of games of chance like lotto and sweepstakes and STL for this matter now.
Para po sa kalamang na marami, babasahin ko po, 'yung declaration ng kuwan, Republic Act Number 1169, as amended, established the Philippine Charity Stakes as the principal government agency for raising and providing funds for health programs, medical assistance, and services and charities of national character. 'Yun po. I do not think, from the- Ah, I do not think, from the videos presented, that you are not performing this mandate. Bakit? Magkano po ba, before this, before dumating po kayo? Magkano po ba percentage of charity fund? Twenty?
Thirty. Thirty percent.
Thirty percent. Ngayon, it's only, if you look at your breakdown, it's only twelve point nine. Are you performing your mandate? Bakit biglang from thirty percent naging twelve point nine? Maybe that's precisely the reason why, ah, those Filipinos who are in need of medical assistance from the PCSO are complaining. Marami na po reklamo eh. So, yun po ang tanong ko sa inyo, are you really performing your mandate as provided for by law? When you have lowered your, ah, percentage of charity fund from thirty to twelve point nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Then, what could be the cause or causes of the shrinking, ah, charity fund? Well, ah, one of it, ah, your honor, is the mandatory contributions that was legislated through special laws.
Special laws?
Yes, yes, your honor.
Ah, hindi naman po kasama dapat yun, no, but hindi kasama dapat yun sa charity fund. Kasi under co-rules, hindi tayo pwedeng magbabas kahit singko sa charity fund. And that's the reason why I was questioning the one point three nine seven billion na, ah, ibabayad sa Ella, na nakipagdibati po ako doon, dahil hindi man po dapat, nasa charity fund ilagay yun, dapat sa operating expenses. And, ah, Mr. Chairman, doon po sa naputol ako ng AGM Gabuyo, and, ah, I, I need her really to take her oath, para hindi siya makapag-sinungaling. I, um, Gabuyo recommended the non-printing of STL tickets by PCSO through a memo, admitting in her memorandum that anyway, again, anyway, AACs are not using them. Henceforth, she allowed them without sanctions, explicitly admitted by her to the previous board of Corpus. Binayaan ni Gabuyo na hindi gamitin STL PCSO printed, um, ah, printed tickets. At may memo siya. So, and mayroon akong kopya niyan. I have a copy of that memorandum, wala pa kami sa board.
Was, was there a border solution that triggered that memo, or is, it was just a memo?
It was just a memo.
Walang places. Where is the border solution?
Kasi po, ang, there's, ah.
Do you have a copy of the border resolution?
Sir, nasa twenty sixteen IRR po natin.
Wala, wala ang IRR, walang places 'yung IRR.
Can I answer po, sir? Okay, sir, first of all, I'm not lying, no? Lahat po ng actions ko po, sir, is covered po ng border solution, and just an implementation po, sir. Now, sir, 'yung letter po ng nahalakan po ni Director Sandra Cam, at that time na dumating po si Chairman Corpus. Ang tanong po nun, hindi na po sufficient 'yung binibigay po ng printing department namin para sa mga eighteen AACs po. Ang sabi po sa akin ni Chairman Corpus, sigurado ka ba na, na ginagamit nila 'yung pabilitas mo? I have no, I have no reason to check po kung ginagamit ng eighteen AAC at that time. Kasi po, sir, kulang po 'yung binibigay namin sa kanina. So talagang magre-resort po yun na, sila po 'yung sariling nagaprint nun. Kaya at that time, sir, kaya ko po, sir, may recommend yun, because kulang po 'yung pabilitas po na, na nabibigay namin sa mga AAC. So I don't like to be blamed, sir, na parang kulang na po 'yung binibigay namin, binibigyan po namin sila ng chance na sila po eh, magprint na sarili nila ano, o gamitin nila yun, hindi STL, ah, prescribe po. Kaya po yun 'yung naging desisyon na, ang direktibo sa akin ni Chairman Corpus, is for them to allow them to print, give them muna the point five, point five percent, and hayaan mo muna sila magprint. Habang binigyan lang namin, sir, sila ng, parang prescribe PCSO po. Ticket. So that means, Mr. Chairman, na ang nag-iimprenta ng mga pabilitas na'to ay mismo 'yung mga wedding lords. So wala kaming way, and ayaw namin, with the new set of board members here, ayaw naming kami ang masisi. Kaya, ah, to Congressman Ako, rest assured, 'yung kinikwestion mo kanina, sa aming bagong board, ah, headed by Chairman Pinili, ipapakita po namin, na implement namin ang bawat word for word ng IRR na dapat iapprove muna ng ating Pangulong Duterte.
Mr. Chair, Congressman Ako. Ah, bago po siguro iimplement na isang bagay, paabrog muna natin kay Presidente, because it is mandated by law. And, ah, I do not know if you have a copy of an IRR submitted to the president already? And if you have, may we request a copy of such, ah, IRR?
Ah, your, your honor, just, ah, in, in reply to Congressman Ako, I believe the two thousand seventeen IRR was submitted to the office of the president, ah, last November of this year. Of, of last year.
The status.
Sir, nagfollow up, ah, the PCSO followed up the, ah, the reply of the office of the president, ni po, bumabalik sa amin. Then, ah, as I mentioned earlier, there are actually eighteen special laws which were legislated, and there were specific provisions that, ah, the share comes from the thirty percent, ah, shall be sourced from the thirty percent charity fund, sir.
And that's one of the purposes of this proposed legislation, no? To correct, because it will render, ah, repealed, no? Rendered repealed lahat 'yung mga earmarks na pinasado sa mga special laws once we, ah, once we enact this bill into, into law. But ang problema is, nakatatlo apat na hearing sa tayo, instead of, you know, ah, assisting us to justify the existence of STL, parang lalong lumalabo. So how can we cooperate with you? How can we incorporate the operation of STL in the new legislation, kung ganyan kahit, kung ganyan kagulo? Ang gulo-gulo ng STL operation?
Ah, your honor, please.
Mr. Chair, can I, ano dyan?
Your honor, please.
Can I just add, napakarami kasing problema talaga ng IRR, no? But gusto ko lang ipoint out, 'yung dun sa revenue allocation nila, ang price five fifty-five percent of net sales, that correct? Pero ang hindi nila kinuconsider, Mr. Chair, na ang, ang saluson, ang STL, two ball. Sa Visayas, three ball. So, based on World Lottery Association rules, there is such a thing as return to player. Iba po ang competition ng return to player pag two ball at three ball, alam niyo bubu yan? Kasi for example, sa, kung arere, ah, saluson, one to thirty-eight. Ang permutation 'yan, thirty-eight times thirty-eight, that's one thousand four hundred forty-four. Times fifty-five percent, lumalabas 'yan mga eight hundred pesos. Kaya yun 'yung pinapatama dun sa ano, sa, sa luson, piso mo, eight hundred. Ngayon sa Visayas, iba po, 'yung square press. So, ah, Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang ipoint out na dapat, since iba po ang STL or type of lottery in Visayas in Mindanao, dapat sa IRR, iba rin ang competition niyo, kasi magkakaiba 'yung return to player as per World Lottery rules eh. So, 'yan po ang pinapoint. Then, 'yung pagbayad niyo sa, sa AAC ng point five percent, eh dapat huwag niyo na silang bayaran. Since they are the ones being granted the franchise, the license, eh bakit papabayaran sila ng ano, ng PCSO? It's either two things, kayo magprint o huwag niyo na silang bayaran. Then, ang suggestion ko po, ah, Mr. Chair, based on research talaga, kung gusto talaga nating tamain to, hindi naman kailangan rin ng POS eh, ang technology is ibang bansa. Ah, smartphone na, kung arere ang kuriyador, gusto mo magpataya, smartphone na, naka-program na, may Bluetooth printer, lahat ng sales may print ng better instrument na may watermark, lahat ng sales nasa smartphone ay direkta na sa PCSO malalaman. Hindi na kailangan ng POS eh, sa, sa Pinoy, out kasi ni Mr. Bago na mahal. Ngayon, kung gusto mo maging kuriyador, ang ito dapat ang kapital mo, smartphone, daba? So hindi ka na mawawalan. So kung gusto talaga n'yung tamain 'yan, it's being used in Asia, it's being used in Africa, it's being used in India. Smartphone, about, ah, bibigay mo sa banana ya, pipindot din 'yung tatlo numero, may Bluetooth printer, may print na yun, be, watermark. So, lahat ng sales po dito, direkta na. Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang ipoint out, kung talagang gusto natin tamain to, kaya nating tamain po to. Salamat po.
Okay, kaya namang itama, bakit hindi ba itama? Ah, Mr.? Thank you, only, sure, I guess, ano, kung bakit tayo itama? Kasi gusto niyo ma, well, hindi kayo, no? Pag gusto ng PCSO, malawak 'yung discretion, and when there's so much discretion, corruption comes in. Di ba ganun lang logical explanation eh?
Yes, ah, your honor, ah, well, ah, in fairness naman, siguro sa amin mga bagong dating, in fact, we were the one that initiated the amendments and the, to tighten the controls. And we were also the part of the board that suggested 'yung termination nun mga, mga AACs which have violated the.
Do you remember last hearing? Sabi ko, 'yung, 'yung hopes, malaki 'yung nilalaan namin dun sa bagong board, because you're there to initiate the necessary reforms. And then, Mr. Bago, you'd like to say something?
Ah, thank you, ah, your, ah, your honor. Ah, marunap po sana akong, I have some suggestions, kasi sabi po nila na ginagawa na nila 'yung IRR. This is all about 'yung sa price fund na fifty-five percent, okay? Dun po sa IRR na ginagawan nun previous, makikita po ninyo na, there is no such thing dun na minemention kung magkano ang balanse ng price fund. Okay, now, what happened? Ganito po kasi 'yan eh, 'yung price fund, for example, is five fifty-five percent, okay? Ngayon, ang nakalagay lang po dun, the balance is held in trust by the AAC. So meaning, wala pong pakialamang PCSO dun, although, although alam nila na mayroon. Magkano ang tanong, hindi nila alam. So, ang suggestion ko po, kung po pwede, ilagay lang po natin doon na magkaroon ng dalaw, kasi ang PCSO wala eh. So kailangan po doon, pagka-dineposito sa banko 'yan, dapat po, dalawa ang nandun AAC at saka PCSO. Sila po 'yung nakapirma dun sa ano, sa, sa bank, sa banka, sa bank deposit, para magwith draw at saka mag ano, mag deposit. Bakit po? Kasi dun po magkakaroon ng safety net, measures. Alam ng PCSO kung magkano ang balanse ng price fund. Bakit po? Kasi sa panahon namin nun, wala pong nakahalam, pag sinabing is zero zero din 'yung price fund. Mas, sa banka po 'yan eh, wala pong magawa, zero zero talaga. Bakit? Ang sasabing, o magsubmit kayo ng report, patamain 'yung sa ganito, patamain 'yung sa lahat. So meaning, zero zero. Ang price fund po, walang nakahalam kung magkano natin dyan. So ang suggestion ko lang po, habang ginagawa namin 'yan, eh, isama ninyo ang PCSO dun sa banko, kasama po ang AACs, na magdeposito sila ng dalawa, sila magwith. Pero dapat po, ang ano, ang chairman at saka GM, meron po sila karapatan din naman, they have also that continuing authority or waiver from the AACs or wherever na exam, ma-examine po 'yung libro. Yun po, kasi nandun po ang korupsyon eh, nandun po. Karagdagan po to sa sinabi ni Mr. Ang, okay po?
Mr. Ang.
Ah, ganito po yun. Ah, pwede po 'yung one hundred, ano, 'yung, ah, two hundred million, eh makukuha po yun. Alam po niyo kung bakit? Ang problema lang po talaga dito, sa totoo lang po, hindi. Andyan po si ano, andyan po si Mr. Inonsilio, okay? Ang problema po dito is bukis. Andyan din po ang Ramroy. Ano problema nila? Bakit hindi nila namimeet ang PMR? Because of bukis, existence of bukis and grilla operations. Kasi po, pinapayagan din po nila kasi 'yan eh. Meron pong dahilan kung magkano minsan, paano po kasi, dun po sa isang area, halimbawa, tatlo nga sinasabi ko na ano, nag, ah, na may, may, may mga stations, is kalahat, isa lang ang niriremeet nila, ganun. Masusub po lang po talaga 'yan, sa totoo lang po. If we have, we have to strictly, no, enforce the elimination of booking operations and grilla operations. Yan lang po ang magiging ano niya, paano po magagawa 'yan, okay? Ang suggestion ko po, suggestion ko lang naman to eh, personal, okay? Ibabak po natin sa parangay ang lahat ng station. Bakit? Kasi po, parangay po ang nakakaalam kung magkano sa kanila, kasi sa, for example, sa isang bayan, sa isang bayan meron tatlong station. Hindi po kayang makontrol, ang problema po dito is kontrol eh. Hindi po kayang makontrol lang ng station manager, 'yung tatlo. Kailangan po talaga niyan, makontrol 'yan. Meron pong syempre, parangay po ang magasidaso. Pero parangay po, maglagay tayo ng station, pero parangay. Sigurado po 'yan?
Yeah, Mr. Ang.
Your honor, ah, hindi na kailangan, naipaliwanag ko na kanina, hindi na kailangan pag-usapan 'yung bukis-bukis, kasi quota system na ginawa ngayon eh. Naka, nakasaranamata ng gobyerno, kung ano na lang ang isinasabit na mga operator, yun nga na totoo. Tapos, eh, hindi rin maikorekt, ano ko lang sa PCSO. Ang tinitignan kasi natin, masyado tayo nakapokus tungkol na 'yung operation niya ng STL. Hindi niyo tinitignan 'yung ibang option, kung paano maikorekt, kaya lang, lumayo kayo ng konti para makita niyo na may iba pa pa ng option. So kapareho nga na sabi ko, as gaming nga, consultant nga, hindi na maikorekt ang STL, hindi na maikorekt 'yan. Makikipagpostahan ako sa inyo, hindi niyo mapapalabas ang actual sales hangga't talaga private na tao, kailangan gobyerno talaga. Ngayon, 'yung tinatanong ni dalawa to. 'Yung isa, siya challenge kami ni Balutan, ako, napatonay, kayo ko raw ang, ang five billion na per month, or sixty bil, or sixty billion per year, o ano, siya challenge pa rin na senado, na hindi raw naming kaya. Well, sa tamang panahon, pagka gusto na, nakapagdesisyon na kayo, pwede tayo mag-usap-usap, papaliwanag mo sa inyo, kung paano kayo magko-operate, hindi ang PCSO. At mapapakita ko na sa inyo, na mali ang operation niya, na kadi, hindi niyo na maikorekt 'yan tandaan niya 'yan. Dahil nakadesign niya as failure, walang solusyon. Ngayon, tungkol sa two hundred, na 'yung, 'yung two hundred million, na sinasabi nagpriver ako, na nagbabride kami, na naglalagay na kami kay Balutan, eh, kasi nung alinga po 'yan, kung, kung che-check niyo ngayon, pwede, pwede niyong imbestigado ngayon, pasama, andyan si Missandra Cam, tsaka si Attorney Cruz. Hindi po kami nagbabride dyan, isang beses ko lang makita si Balutan, gumagawa lang siya ng excuse, para lang mapagtak pa lang ang kalokohan niya, yun lang po.
Well, the question is, is PCSO ready to, ah, assume operation of the STL? How will you contend with the existing gambling lords, 'yung mga wedding operators? Yun na naman ang kalaban ninyo, di ba?
Yes, your honor, and I think, ah, we also to review, because you know, there are many persons going around to have a, to have a ATO authority to operate. And I know that they are not the principal. So, really, if they have already the ATO, they will get financiers. So that's really the issue now, and, ah, I hope that we can also evaluate if really, the one given the ATO is really the one, ah, operationalizing the STL operations in the area. Ah, ito 'yung napansin ko, because there are many, ah, persons, ah, going to my office and asking if they can apply for an AC, ATO. But I know na hindi siya 'yung financier. So yun ngayon ang mga challenge namin, and I hope na.
Di ba trabaho nila ng due diligence?
Oo, yes, sir.
Pag may misrepresented, tumukan ako ng authority to operate, na hindi na pala siya 'yung, ah, nabigyan ng, ah, o naggranta ng license, diba?
Kasi sir eh, naghanap sila ng financier, so di namin alam na 'yung financier nila. So, actually, this is a transaction.
The STL operators? Ano actually experience niyo dun sa ground, sa video?
Sir, ako po 'yung sa Diamond Gaming, sa Bulacan. With your respect, sa lahat po ng nandito sa board, Congressman, and Senator Lawson. Sa amin naman po sa ground, ever since noon two thousand six, ang una naming naexperiensya, alapong gustong maniwala nun sa STL. Kaya po sa Bulacan, apat na bayan lamang po ang nagumpisa. Dahil po nun, medyo alam naman niyo 'yung nangyari, during the stoppage of the legal number games, ang atin lamang punto niya kung bakit nagumpisa, eh, to give, ah, ano, ah, sufficient na trabaho dun sa mga nadislocate. But noon po, ang mga local executive, hindi nila malaman kung ano, ano batong STL, is this proper? O baka mamaya, hindi na tayo mayor dito. So noon po kami sa Bulacan, ang nauna lang, Santa Maria, Giggintos, and Rafael, and Ulila.
So noon po kami sa Bulacan, ang nauna lang, Santa Maria, Giggintos, San Rafael, and Tulila. All others, wala po 'yun. And there were municipalities, or cities na ngayon, na it almost took a year bago sila nagumpisa. Lalo na po 'yung penetrated, eh, deformer, illegal number operators, so 'yun po. Now, lahat naman po ng rules, ang bible namin dyan is the IRRR. Kung ano po 'yung nakalagay doon, on the, uh, pag-aapply, ano bang kailangan, nakaganon kami sa SEC, may korporasyon, meron kaming visibility study. We comply to all of this. But sa ground po, ang palaging issue, from the media, from mga, uh, sources, eh, we have not remitting the correct revenue, palagi pong ganun. So hindi po, meron po kasi monitoring agency before eh, hahanin 'yung SOPD. With your respect sa PCSO po, sila po 'yung, sila po 'yung nagmo-monitor noon, doon sa mga problema. Kaya po 'yung sinasabi ni Colonel Bago Kangina, using the handheld terminal, nagkaroon na po kami dyan ng ano, ng pag, pagtatrain noon sa area, may Koreano po noon eh. May, mayangat po, hindi kami nakakabayad, may subteya na ako ng corte. But lahat po ngayon, naka-stock lang sa amin dahil hindi namin nagamit. Ang naging problema po sa ground, hindi makakomodate, kasi server po ang problema eh. Pagmo, nagdati nga na 'yun, three times a day ang ating draw eh. Hindi po kamuka ng luto, pupunta ka doon sa estasyon, bi, ano, kaunti lang ang dating. Hindi po kamuka ng barangay, meron pa pong barangay, na ang dispersal ng, ng mga bahay layo-layo. Hindi po kayang abutin ng ating signal.
Sir, Enuncilio, magkanong daily gross sa Bulacan?
Ngayon po, doon po sa...
'Yung totoong, totoong mo na, magkano talaga?
Ngayon po, mga port, port M, 'yung aming nakadiklara eh.
'Yun na nakadiklara?
PMR po, kasi 'yun po ang aming susunod.
Ang tatanong po, 'yung totoong, uh, gross, se, kubranse sa isang araw sa Bulacan? Huwag 'yun sa PMRan?
Hindi po ako na-legal ng masyado, noon po kasi magpasa ako ng ano, port lang, noon nagumpisa kami eh.
Uh, Senior Superintendent Keramat, magkano ang, uh, daily gross dyan? 'Yung sa, 'yung totoo ah?
Yes, sir, uh, my assessment, sir, uh, safe answer, sir, for at least ten million, sir.
Yeah, ten million?
Yes, sir.
You're right, twelve, actually, that's ten to twelve. 'Yung unsafe?
One five.
One five, sir.
Twenty, twenty.
You see, nakita niyo 'yung discrepancy? 'Yung PMRR, sinasabi niya, tentative pa nga eh. Tapos compared to the actual, or 'yung potential na dapat ako kolekta, ang laking, ang laking discrepancy eh. Si Mr. Chairman? Sige, okay, Congressman's been, after Congressman's been...
Thank you, Mister Chairman, pero na, nasadlak na po imbestigasyon natin sa panepera. Pero po gusto ko sana bangitin dito, sir, sa mga imbitado tayong mga mayor dito. May mga bagay po na, naistor po rito sa mga pangyayari dito sa ating, uh, STL, na mga institution natin na nasisira, lalo na po, pagitin natin local government, ang atin po mga PMP, ang atin mga PMP para mga laruan na lang. Kung hindi po lapulpi 'yung kanila PMR, sinisisi po 'yung mga police. Eh, alam po naman ninyo, nagipulis din kayo, Mister Chairman, pag hinabol mo isang kovbrador, isang pulis ang kailangan mo eh. Ikukunti po naman ang police natin, tsaka 'yung mga police natin, hindi na pong para kovbrador itong mga to. Ito po 'yung mahinanap natin pang terrorista, sinasabi ko sa hearing namin, sa House. So 'yung ginagamit natin sa mga bank robbers, sa mga sindikato, pero nagiging naa highlight ang trabaho nila, hindi po sila, kulang po sila sa panguhuli sa mga kovbrador. May mga pamilya din po itong mga to, mga professionals din itong mga to eh, bakit po dati sila insultin ng ganun? Kasi coming from the words of Mister Balutan, ang sabi po niya, Mister Chairman, animik 'yung performance ng mga police, kaya hindi po nakataperform sa mga, mga police natin. Anyway, sir, uh, kaya nga isang ano ko dito, sa kuwan natin, ako po, ng Governor, ako'y nalapit po 'yung STL na 'yan. At 'yung pong words na sinabi ko, this is designed to fail, sinabi ko po na 'yan ng Governor pa ko. Alam po ni Mister Charlie 'yan, na binanggit ko po 'yun dahil nung binasa ko po 'yung IRRR nila, hindi po nila involved ang local government. Ito dapat mga partners nila, kasi lahat po ng, paggagawa nila ng kanilang STL, ito po sa probinsya, sa mga bayan, sa mga siyudad. Ito pong mga governors, mga city mayors, kasi lahat po ang head, doon sa probinsya, head ng mga police, peace and order council chairman, kasi lahat po nagbibigay ng mga lisensya sa mga activity na gawin sa probinsya o sa mga siyudad, eh, wala po sa IRRR, hindi po sila di. Kaya ang sabi ko talagang din design ito ng mga gambling lords. At alam ko na po kung sino sila ang nagdesign ito, dahil police din po ako dati. Anyway, uh, kaya po sir, sinasabi ito dahil, kawawa ito mga police natin, pagkatapos 'yung institution na nasisira, ang kanilang credibility sa kanila mga bayan, kagaya po sa Pangasinan ngayon, ito po lahat ng report ng mga police noon sir, na tinasok doon illegally at anomalously, na anomalo sir, paglalagay doon sa kanila noon, noon Speed Game, na nandun sa amin ngayon. At nandito si Miss Gabuyo, nandito 'yung mga bagong mga kuwan natin, mga, bago nating mga member ng board sir, na hiniling ko noon December eleven sa kanila, dahil tineremini nila 'yung dating nandun. Siguro sir, ang kulang noon, na hindi niya nabayaran sa kanyang PMR, may gising bilyon. Pagkatapos po, sabi ko sa kanila, habang maguluban ako, pwede ba, wag muna kayo maglagay? Kaya tama po 'yung sinasabi nila rito kanila, sir, lahat po na rin ko rito tama. Sabi po ni Chairman Pinili, control at accounting, ang kulang natin, tama po 'yun. Ito sa mas, sinasabi sa board, diktatoriya pong nangyayari dun, si Gabuyo lang po, tsaka si Balutan ang susunod dyan, 'yung mga board po, di po alam ang nangyayari dyan. Kaya po nagkaroon ng order po doon, nagkaroon bigla ng operator doon ng iisito sa Pangasinan, na hindi alam po ng mga board. Dahil po nandito mga listahan, abutin lang po tayo ng ano, nainagay ko na po rito 'yung mga petsa, kung ano po ang mga nangyari, doon po sa House. Ito po halimbawa, ito po, malay violation po ito, tignan mo itong ginagamit, noon Speed Game doon, na morisibo po nila. Ito po ginagamit sa ngayon, bagong uli po ito, dalawang araw, palang po ito. 'Yung hiniling ko na huwag muna silang maglagay doon, ng, uh, ano sir, ng, uh, what, 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 this, ang AAC, AAC, dahil po hindi pa inapod ng board, at hindi nasunod po ang proseso. At noon last hearing po, inamin ni Miss Gabuyo, na hindi po dumansap board 'yung approval niyan. Palagi ko naman, lamili mo 'yun, inamin mo 'yun, doon sa hearing sa House. At sinabi po rin sir, noon hearing namin sa nakaraan, tsaka tatanong namin kay kuwan, kay Mister Balutan, ang sabi po niya, ano doon po ang gagawin niya sa mga very powerful gambling lords? I think, yeah, you are that, you said that. Kasi nakukomplain po siya kung bakit daw nga may mahahanap buhay ng ano, may kinikita ng PCSO, bakit daw may mga umaangal pa, sabantalan noon po, wala namang kinikita ang PCSO. Nandyan po siya, sinabi ko noon tanungin ko, mga pulis na namamatay, kasi di re-describe po 'yung mga pulis, wag silisisi dahil, ito pa panglaman namin mga terrorista, eh, bakit daw, tag sagot po niya sa akin, eh, how about if we confronted with a very powerful gambling lord, sabi po niya. Kaya sabi ko, nagulat po ako, Jesus Mary Jose, pa trabaho mo 'yan eh. 'Yan pong sagot po niya sa akin. Kaya po, Mister Chairman, tapa po si Mister Ang, palagi ko po, mahirap ang puteng paguwalat ito, ako po, very hopeful po ako noon. Dahil lang sabi nga po ito, dalawang susunod natin, para kumita PCSO for charity, at matapos na po ang illegal gambling. Wala po akong problema doon sa kuwan, ang nagmamanis po 'yung mga gambling lords, pero huwag naman sana lahat, kaya isa lang, siguro dalawa. Kaya gambling lord po, dahil 'yung po ang binabago po natin eh, gagawin nga po, tama na silang legal, 'yung mga illegal nila eh. Eh, okay lang po sana 'yun. Pero ang nangyayari, ang naprap natin itong PCSO mismo, dito lang nanggaling makalukohan ulit. Kaya na nga ni ulit mga gambling lords. Sana silang kinontrol natin, silang binago natin, hindi, ang nabago natin itong proseso dito sa ating mismong STL management. That become the problem, pero po sabi ni Mister Ang, at naiwalap po ko rin, na habang nandyan niya sa sistema, ang nangyayari po ngayon, ay hindi po na natin bababawi ito sir. Palagi ko, ganito na po nito. Kaya dito sir, sabi ko sa inyo, noon pong ipresenta sa Pangasinan niya, noon Governor na po 'yung anak ko, nandyan po ang Governor, dahil Governor, presidente na po si Presidento Terde, magbasahay po lang po sir, kung pwede 'yung sulat na ginawa ng, ng ano, noon napuno na rin 'yung Governor na Pangasinan, huwag po ng sulat, para kay Chairman Corpus at saka eh kay Mister Balutan, na hindi namang po sila gud. Ito po 'yung sulat, kung pwede po, basahay po lang sir, dahil di po nakarating 'yung Governor natin at may compromise po siya roon. Nandun po 'yan, hindi pa 'yung palagyan. Anyway, sir, dear Chairman Corpus, as the duly elected Governor of the Province of Pangasinan, and mandated by the local government code to exercise general supervision and control over all programs, projects, services, and activities of the province, I write to the PCSO leadership on the following noticeable irregularities being simulated and implemented by the PCSO, which absolutely contradict with the provisions and implementing rules and regulations of the PCSO, small town lottery, and other pertinent laws affecting the PCSO operations. These dubious activities are generating chaotic scenario, which is very detrimental to our province and of the people of Pangasinan. This I will not take sitting down. Thus, in the name of fairness, I'm giving now a chance for PCSO to immediately address the following complaints or observations. Per local government code, PCSO is mandated to coordinate and collaborate with LGUs on only project, on, on any projects, activities that will be done on the concerned LGU. Per your IRRR, the area of operation with small town lottery is in the province. But how come we were never accorded courtesy of even just consultation before you started your STL operations here? Which I understand started in March, and which was stopped, terminated by your office in the first week of December last year. Number two, though feeling so bad because of being insulted by the above cited non-consultation with us, I kept my silence in deference to the counsel of my father, a former police officer, to turn Congressman, Governor for three terms, and now again a Congressman, who told me then these exact words. Pagbigyan mo sila dyan po, g, alam ko sinero si Presidente na masubpo ang illegal gambling. Makita mo lang kasi sa mga in appoint na Chairman at General Manager, na parehong PMR at retired generals. So I left everything regarding this matter to our very capable PMP Provincial Director, who is also a PMR. To my dismay, yesterday, our PMP Provincial Director officially wrote to me, inquiring on the veracity and regularity of the PCSOs directed, that apparently are confusing, which may lead to misunderstanding between the provincial government, local executives, the PMP personnel of the province, and the gaming operations themselves, which will result eventually to peace and order problem. I have been informed by the President of the Union of Local Authorities of the Philippines, or ULLAP, and the Chairman of the League of the Province of the Philippines, Governor Albitzara, the ULLAP has also a resolution airing this appointment on the STL operations of the PCSO and many already submitted Sanggonya Panalawigan resolutions, to just continue the present STL operations in the respective provinces, because of PCSO's inefficiency and inconsistency. Likewise, even the Office of the President is now currently reviewing the imminent and inevitable role of the LGU on the PCSO gaming operations. During the recent Congress hearing regarding STL operations, the provincial government was informed of the heated discussion on the PCSO STL irregularities, and it is very unfortunate that in the province of Albay, fatal encounters occurred due to STL operations. I share also the gravity of the STL irregularities in Camarini Sur. To prevent the same untoward encounters, General Balutan was asked to defer authorizing another AAC in Pangasinan, pending investigation and proper coordination. Ito po 'yung binabanggit ko niya na ako pong humiling nito sa kanya. Number five, how come despite the foregoing circumstances, the invalidator insisted on authorizing Speed Game incorporated to operate STL in Pangasinan? This performs arrogance to the strongest sense, as not even a slight sense of respect, was accorded to the LGUs, to the people of Pangasinan, to the Congress of the Philippines, to the ULLAP, and even if this authorization is sanctioned by both resolution, we, the provincial government, question the resolution conformity with the IRRR and other pertinent laws. Again, under my words, I will not allow any illegal gambling in my area of jurisdiction, and peace and security will always be my priority. With this, I appeal that PCSOs immediately restrain from staying operations in the province of Pangasinan until these irregularities are resolved. I wish not to start twenty eighteen questioning PCSO, but I have a commitment to the people of Pangasinan as their governor. A touch is the letter to me, to me by the provincial director. There is a letter to the provincial director, asking the PCSO the confusing, uh, order to him. That's why, uh, this prompted the governor to write this letter, and it was never answered. The answer was placing there and is is a to play. So the claim a while ago, that the board is not working as a board. I'm sorry to tell you this, but you are new, the trio of you here, Chairman Pinili, Mister Surtayan, uh, Director Cam, but the old board is not working as a board. There was dictatorship, there was dictatorship, partnership between Balutan and Miss Gabuyo. That is the top in the town. Hindi naman may kakailan na usapan dyan sa underworld, kaming mga dating police. Mga balita lang dyan, hundred percent exacto, kung luwating 'yan. Kaya pati ito mga events na minisyon ko sir, doon sa ano, ito lahat ay uras dito, nung ti-tula tampet sa, ng mga nangyari sa kanilang board, alam po namin lahat. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Congressman Ako?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I have here a, a copy of, uh, the Manila Times, dated February twelve, twenty eighteen, and at the back page is, uh, is an advertisement of, uh, I would like to quote, United Stand of STL Operators. There are three AACs here already, may we ask if they know anything about this?
Please respond, uh, Mister Mercado, Mister Olivares? Magkano binayon dyan sa ano, sa full-page ad? Magkano contribution? Ah, hindi niya alam 'yan? Eh, pero kayo 'yung sinasabi dyan eh, United Stand?
Uh, Mister Chair, wala po akong nalalaman po dito.
Si Mister Mercado?
Mister Chair, wala po, wala, wala pong may di.
Mister Enuncilio?
Mister Chair, uh, may proceed? Uh, it's stated here, and in, uh, uh, capital le, more big letters, we condemn all planned and systematic defamation against us by a notorious gambling lord, ten of his allies in politics, and other private individuals and groups. Uh, may I ask the PCSO, if you have anything to do with this? Remember that you are under oath, and we can ask the publishers of this newspaper, uh, who, uh, you know, who asked that this be printed in their newspaper. May I ask the PCSO, if you have anything to do with this?
Uh, your honor, personally, wala po akong alam dyan.
Miss Cam?
Wala din po ako alam, pero ang Manila Times po is the PR man of GM Balutan. Pangalawa na po 'yan noon una, nagadvertise siya, paid advertisement, the whole page, na ang Employees Association daw ng PCSO is against me, ganito ganyan. Pero ng mga tinanong ko 'yung maemplyado doon, wala daw silang nalalaman. So, gawain po 'yan Mister Dante Ang and Mister Chairman, uh, I may suggest po, naipatawag ito si Dante Ang ng Manila Times, kasi siya ang PR man po ni Mister Balutan, at malaki po ang perang involved dyan. Opo, 'yung advertisement, uh, 'yung advertisement budget po ng PCSO ay napakalaki, at iyan ay next kung...
Can you hire a PR firm for the PCSO without a board resolution?
Sa kay GM Balutan lang 'yan.
No, is there a board resolution?
No.
Even before you came in as board directors? Is there validity?
Wala, siguro, wala, Mister Chair.
Walang board resolution?
Parang wala.
So paano ka gas...
Tsaka wala akong alam dyan, Mister Chair. 'Yung sa...
Yeah, pa, paano kayo magaappropriate o magalukin ng bondo for a full-page ad?
And that cost around three hundred thousand, for the whole page. Kaya noon...
And nobody among the board members?
Wala po, even Chairman Pinili doesn't know that.
Mister Chair, can I say something? I, I have a suspicion that ano eh, this...
I have a suspicion that ano eh, this came from ano, from a PCSO source. Because while they, they project a united stand of STL operators, merong statement dito na nakalagay attributing to themselves. Not necessarily the board now, no, but maybe General Balutan, AGM Gabuyo, whoever. Nakalagay po dito ah, the 15.7 billion earnings of the DoT administration in 2017, compared to our only 4.7 billion annually under the best two administration. Ito na po, is the product of our employees' hard work. Is the product of our employees' hard work, meaning PCSO's employees' hard work. So, while they're, while they're trying to hide the true advertiser, lumalabas dun sa whereas, sila 'yung ano, sila 'yung ano, tinatamaan ng investigation, kaya sila 'yung napapalabas po nito. So, I think, uh, you know, uh, while we are doing this in aid of legislation and to correct the wrongs, eh, dapat, uh, we should all be positive in ano, in how we can correct this. Hindi 'yung mga ganitong mga advertisement, Mr. Chair, tapos ang nakakalungkot kung government money was used instead of it being used for charity fund. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Miss Gabuyo, do you know anything about this? Have you heard about this?
No, sir.
Where you told about this?
No po.
So who knows?
I don't know, sir.
Ganun nga po ang nangyari, nung una, nagpa-advertise sila, pini-praise nila ang sari, uh, sabi nila galing sa Employees Union. Pero ang dami ko pong tinanong, kasi itong mga sources ko po dito mga empleyado din. And so, AGM Gabuyo and GM Balutan, at lahat ng AGMs dito, uh, nakukuha ko ang impormasyon mismo galing sa loob. So, kagaya nito, uh, gusto kong bumalik po doon, Mr. Chairman, sa sinasabi ni, ni AGM Gabuyo, na hindi totoo, hindi siya nagsisinungaling tungkol dun sa printing. Uh, Printing Department is printing all her orders of tickets needs during the time, and there were papers available pa during the time. And she recommended not to use na. Printing is recommending to use the available tickets, and she insisted no more printing. That is the reason, kaya sa amended IRR, it was allowed, and si Gabuyo ang nagpagawa ma-include. Nauna ang recommendation po, Mr. Chairman, kay sa IRR. Now, AGM Gabuyo now is saying sumusunod lang siya sa IRR. Eh, siya ang nagpagawa sa IRR na ma-amend to include that. So lies, lies again. Uh, please ask AGM Gabuyo again, which came first? Your recommendation or amended IRR? And I will cite you for lying kanina, kasi nagsinungaling siya, sir. Oo. We have to stop this. Uh, pag-sisinungaling niyo at pag, pag, uh, uh, sama-sama niyo ni GM Balutan para ma-mislead ang ating, uh, ang ating bayan. Kaya I'm asking a favor from Mr. Chairman and this committee na iscite you po siya for lying to her teeth.
Meron bang representation na expenses ang PCSO or the GM? Binigyan niyo ba ng, binigyan ba ng board ang ng authority, ang General Manager of PCSO, na magkaroon ng representation expenses? Wala?
As to mount, well, ang alam ko, kami board may rata kami, which is 15,000 a month. So, the GM should, uh, most probably have a higher rata. I, I'm just not sure kung...
Would you know, how much? Ba't wala kayong alam tungkol sa PCSO? Miss Gabuyo?
Sir, I don't know po kung ano. I think it's...
Pero meron?
I think so, sir. It's the admin who knows, sir.
Admin? Meron bang admin dito? Si no, would like to see justification. Yung gagastos sa isang, assuming that it was Balutan who caused the publication of this paid ad, you know? Costing, sabi natin 250 or 300,000 pesos, just for one day. May panggagalingan yan? And kung government fan dyan or PCSO fans, dapat alam ng board, di ba? Or, at least malam 'yung lamsum amount being, uh, given to the GM for representation, kasi kung 15,000 a month, ang rata ng Board Director, siguro makapagpa-public ng ganito to? And, you know, he's engaging even this committee and the House Committee sa media war, di ba? Sabi nga ni Congressman Villa Fuerte, is that giveaway? While they're trying to hide kung sino talaga, because United Stand ng STL Operators. Pero mag-aattribute naman na parang merong self-advocating phrase na sasabihin mo pa 'yung mas pataas 'yung kinikita mo. So, nanginain pa dun sa ginagastos sa pang-paid, pang-paid ad. Para mamenos 'yung masama na rin dun sa propaganda.
So, Mr. Chair, if you may add, na itong ad na'to lumalabas na 'yung PCSO, whoever that is, is protecting the current STL operators na ayaw nilang ma-question the existing system. The reason why we're here is we're investigating on how we can improve the collection, raise revenues, and you know, which will lead down to charity fund. But kung ang nangyari po is, if certain members of the PCSO will try to protect gambling lords, uh, uh, pretending to be AACs, then there's really something wrong within PCSO. And lumalabas po sa hiring, sa senado, sa kongreso, na talagang may collusion within PCSO to protect these gambling lords. And lumabas na'to kay sa statement ni General Balutan dun sa hiring sa kongres, na nahirapan ko siyang ibalanse. Uh, lalo na mahirapan ko siyang labanan ng mga gambling lord. Eba, simple lang naman yan eh, kung ang gambling lord gumagawa ng mali, di hipainto. Uh, at chinaling nga niya si, si San, Director Sandra Cam and certain members, si Mr. Charlie Atong Ang on media, na kung kaya niyo makakulect ng 6 billion, eh, magre-resign ako. Mali, kung hindi mo kayang koletihin 'yung dapat, dapat mag-resign, not, not involve any personalities. We are here, we are all government workers here eh. Meaning, we, we were here to do a job, and we have to do it with our best. Kung di natin kaya, then either we resign or face the consequences. This is mainly the reason why we're here. Thank you.
I agree with you, Congressman Villa Fuerte. At gusto ko na po ngayon ipasuk yan. Dahil 'yung mga, mga listahan ng AAC, I'm interested on the AAC in Iloilo Province. This certain AAC, ang pangalan nito is Sam Aguilar, is also one of the narcolist, dun sa listahan po ng ating Pangulungderte na nasa narcolist. Ito 'yun si Odicta, Mabilog, and Sam Aguilar. Um, meron po ako ng mga papeles na dumating na sa akin, kung sino ito si Sam Aguilar. But it's so happen that Sam Aguilar is frequent, uh, frequenting, uh, visiting GM Balutan before na hindi pa kami dumating. At, uh, ngayon, AGM Gabuyo, can you please tell this honorable body, kung ito ba ay nakabayad na ng PMRR, ang cashman ba nito ay nakabayad? Kasi it seems na pagdating sa kaibigan, mga kamista nila, kahit hindi nagbayad ng cashman at hin, uh, shortfall sila sa PMRR, sige sige lang. So hanggang ngayon, nandyan yan ang sa Iloilo Province. And I've met him outside. He's trying to shake my hands, but I refused because I said, "You are one of those who are on the list of no other than PRID in the narcolist of Iloilo Province." Pero binigyan pa po ito ng pagkakataon ni GM Balutan, and of, of course, in cahoots with AGM Gabuyo, para mabigyan ito ng franchise doon sa Iloilo Province. Now, um, I just want to ask AGM Gabuyo, magkano ba ang, uh, ang naiwan na cashman ni Mr. Aguilar, Sam Aguilar? At, uh, ano, magkano ang shortfall nito sa PMRR? And the other thing is, um, Mr. Chairman, and dito naman lang, gusto ko din naitanong kung sino itong happy cool. Because apparently, itong mga ano ng happy cool dito sa Cavite at tsaka sa, um, NCR, ito 'yung mga Uyami Group, uh, class 1982 na mga general. So, ang lumalabas ngayon, ang namamayag pag na mga, mga AACs ngayon ay mga military men, at ang nasa likod nito ay walang iba, kundi ang pinaka-bigtime na gambling lord. Kagaya din po ng Bulakan, si Mr. Monsilio? Monsilio, sino po ang financial niyo po? Sa Bulakan? Wag kang malsinungaling.
Mr. Cam, you address...
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Always a listen, Chair.
Okay po.
Miss, Mr. Enuncilio, trying to respond.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, nung ako po eh i-hire dyan as Provincial Coordinator, ang na, tangulup po nun, iba nga Taga-Bulakan lahat, lahat po na Incorporated Taga-Bulakan. Kaya po hindi ako pwedeng sumagot, ang kaya ko lang po sagutin, kung ano 'yan nasa GIS, 'yun lang po ang kaya kong isagot.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as far as I know...
Hindi ko masyadong nakuha, pag-iulit 'yung explanation.
Sir, kasi ang tinatanong po sa akin...
Ikaw ang nakalista as AAC, di ba? Ikaw ang chairman ng corporation or?
Presidente po kami.
President of corporation?
Yes, sir.
And yet, ang kaya mo lang sagutin GIS?
Yung lang po kung ano 'yung nakalagay dun pangalan, Incorporated Kamiila po, kaya ko sagutin kay ma'am.
Kilala mo lahat yun?
Opo.
Ikaw naglabas ang pera rito?
Hindi po.
Ba't nung... Sino naglabas ang pera? Malaki pera ito, band lang, magkano ang band ng Bulakan? Magkano ang cashman ng Bulakan?
110 po.
110 million? Hindi naman sa minamata kita, pero...
Yes, sir.
Ikaw naglabas nung 110 million?
Hindi po, sir.
Sino?
Incorporated...
Eh, sino nga, sino?
Meron pong Hector Maliwa, Truckers ng Saldeposo.
Sino talaga ang financier niyan? Sabi mo nalang 'yung totoo.
Ang inabutan ko po sir, 'yung presidente eh, nung i-hire eh.
Sino presidente?
Yung Aurelio Cruz po yun.
Mr. Chair, nagsisinungaling siya. Pareho din niya ng event chance sa si Mr. Canlas, na hindi alam kung saan nagbubola, at hindi masabi kung saan binubola, ang instead na pili, mapili. So, uh, alam mo sir, mabuti pa magsabi ka na ng totoo, dahil alam ko naman na si Bong Beneda dyan ang financier niyo.
Hindi ko po alam yun.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, ano, question? Kilala mo ba si Mr. Bong Beneda? You're under oath.
Kilala ko po, pero ako baka hindi nakilala.
Paano mo siya nakilala?
By names po yan eh, sa, sa larangan naman ng ano, minsan nakakapagtanong tayo.
Sino po siya?
Ang alam ko po, Taga-Pampanga.
At, uh, ano pagkaalam mo sa kanya? Ano, hanap po niya? Ano pagkaalam mo siya? Ano ba siya?
Ang alam ko po, meron siya...
Artista ba siya? Celebrity ba siya? Politico ba siya? Ano ba?
Ang alam ko po, meron siyang mga negosyo dati ng hardware. Yun lang, hindi po masyado, wala po akong ganung connection sa kanya, hindi ko naman po kasi kakilala.
So, you're under oath, hindi, so, hindi ano?
Yes, sir.
Are you the, are you the current president of this operation? So being the current president, uh, sa Bulakan, kayo po, no?
Yes, sir.
Ilan ba ang bayan sa Bulakan?
Twenty-three po yun.
Sa buong Bulakan?
Opo, ang city po dun eh, tatlo na, malolos.
Magkano ba ang ingreso sa Bulakan?
Yung po, 110 ngayon.
Oh, 110?
Monthly, a month. Yeah, four, mga 4 million a day po yun.
4 million a day?
3.8 to 4 million a day.
So, 4 million times 3, 320 million, so...
110 lang po mahigit.
So gumagamit ba kayo ng mga papilitos?
Yung po print out, 'yung pini-print na papilitos.
Sino nagpi-print po nun?
Meron na po kaming authority na kami 'yung magprint eh.
Hindi, ano 'yung, ano 'yung, uh, 'yung pini-printo, 'yung PCSO prescribed for?
Yes, sir, yun po, may tatak.
Yung dun sa Bulakan ba, uh, 'yung ano ba niyo, 'yung, uh, 'yung pinagbubulahan ba niyo, uh, meron kayong ginagamit pang bola, tama?
Yung po masin.
Anong klaseng machine yun? San galing yun?
Para pong kabukalan sa loto.
So...
PCSO po galing.
PCSO sanction yun?
Alam po nila 'yung brand, tsaka 'yung ano...
Merong, meron bang, ilan, ilan ba ang bulahan niyo?
Isa lang po.
Paano kumasira?
Bulakan, isa lang po, Andro Place.
Hindi, uh, paano kumasira yun?
Meron po alternate, dalawa eh.
So, yun 'yung ginagamit niyo?
Yes, sir.
Ngayon, uh, ang tanong ko, uh, 'yung band na binigay po niyo sa PCSO, magkano ulit yun?
110 po. 110 million, sir, to 110.
So san galing po 'yung pera na yun?
Progressive po kasi, cumulative, hindi naman ang ibidro 'yung...
Ikaw, magkano share mo dun?
Twenty percent po.
So, twenty mil, uh, 22 million ang binigay mo dun?
Eh, dumami na po eh, kasi po buhan...
Hindi, 'yung ano, uh, sabi mo 20% ang shiner mo dun, so 22 million?
Ayun na, latest po, from five, before I to one, one to five, to twenty.
Hindi, simple lang tanong, 110 million 'yung ano, 'yung band?
Opo, sir.
Ang sabi niyo po, 20% ang share niyo dun?
Yes, sir.
Kayo po?
Yes, sir.
So 22 million po yun?
Yes, sir.
Bago po kayo pumasok dito sa negosyong nito, ano ba ang negosyo pa niyo?
Uh, kung minsan po, buy and sell, tsaka merong konting, uh, nakareistro na, uh, ano, yun po, nagsu-supply ng mga safety equipment.
Anong buy and sell yun? Parang gusto ko rin yun na magandang kumita dun, may 22 million ah.
Hindi naman, sir, sasakyan. Eh, pag u sir, kasi po ni Raria ginawa, eh, 100,000 ang kinikita.
Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang pong ano, kasi under oath on record to, no? At malaki talaga ang suspeksyon na even Bulakan in other areas, uh, it's being used by current gambling lords. Maybe later on, uh, we can tackle that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Aguilar is here. Siya 'yung nabanggit mo kanina, Sandra?
Yes, sir.
Siya 'yung operato na Iloilo?
Yes, sir. Uh, Iloilo Province. At mayroon na ako ng intelligence report tungkol sa drug, uh, ano niya. Kompleto na po ako.
Mr. Chair, uh, gusto ko lang pong ibalik dun sa, hindi ko talaga maubos maisip na makapagbibigay pa ng charity itong PCSO eh. Kasi, kung titignan po natin 'yung kanilang kuwan, uh, revenue allocation, wala talagang matitira para sa mga tao eh, as far as their computation is concerned with, uh, 12.9%. Kasi, uh, the way I look at it, unang una, under gross sales receipt, 'yung printing cost, uh, ang pwede lang maiwan sa 2%, dun sa AAC is 0.5%, tama? Yes. Pero 'yung 1.5% binabalik sa inyo. Inautorize niyo nga sila na magprint, pero 'yung 1.5% na pagprint, inukuhanin niyo. So naiwan lang sa kanila, 0.5%. Baka naman yun ang dahilan, bakit papilitos ng wedding ang ginagamit? Dahil kulang yun. Miss Gabuyo, don't just nod your head, you use the microphone.
Sir, before po kasi sir, 'yung kami po 'yung nagpi-print noon, retain po namin 'yung 2% po. And then when Chairman Corpus, uh, Assumis Office, nung may consultation po siya sa mga AACs nun, uh, they admittedly na kulang po 'yung binibigay namin, so inallow po sila to, to print, provided po, sa kanila po 'yung 0.5.
Congressman Ako, were you present during the consultation with the AACs?
Yes, po.
Sino, sino mga nandun?
Yung 18 po, 'yung 18, 'yung unang eight, uh...
Was, was Beneda present?
Wala po, sir, wala po.
Sino mga gambling lords nandun? Kasi apparently, 'yung mga AACs, 'yung mga listed operators, hindi siya masyado, masyado maalam tungkol sa operation ng STL, di ba?
Sir, actually po, ang umatend po ng meeting nun, yun po 'yung mga operations manager that time.
Uh, 'yung naibabalik na 1.5%, san po 'yung ginagamit?
For now po sir, wala pong, nasa ano lang po namin, nasa Treasury, sir. Nirerimit po sa amin ng AACs po.
And who is in charge of this fund?
Charge, it's PCSO po, sir.
Uh, I mean what particular office and who is the particular individual handling this?
Sir, 'yung, 'yung remittance po sir ng... Uh, sir, Treasury po, Treasury.
Yes, and could you please provide this, uh, uh, committee a certification to the effect that the 1.5% is within, uh, your treasury at the PCSO?
Yes, sir.
Kung nandito po 'yung Taga-Treasuries? Nandito po 'yung taga treasury? Gusto namin malaman talaga kung, ah, kwan, kasi, ah, 'yung sagot mo kasi sa akin bilang investigador, Madam Gabuyo, eh, nagdududa ako talaga eh, kasi hindi definite 'yung sagot mo sa akin. Ano po?
We could provide, sir.
Yes, could you please provide this committee a certification to the effect na ito na 'yung one point five percent dahil sabi mo, hindi niyo nagagamit. So gusto ko malaman kung talagang intact 'yung one point five percent of the printing cost. Okay?
Okay po.
Next, 'yung, ano kaya sa tingin mo, 'yung ten percent na agency commission, would it be enough, ah, for the operations of the AACs? 'Yung ten percent?
Sir, ah, I'm not sure in a position to, to determine, sir, kung enough po 'yung ten percent po sa AAC.
May we ask the, ah, the AAC's representatives who are present, Mister Chair, if the ten percent commission that they get from PCSO or from the prize fund would be enough for their operations? Mister Mercado? Ah, wala, si Mister Ramloy?
Good morning po sa lahat, Mister Chair and to all of you. Ang ten percent po ay sa palagay namin, okay po sa amin, kaya lang, totoong lumaki po ang PMRR po namin. Katalo po nabanggit ko sa inyo nung una tayong naghearing noong January, ang kalaban po namin sa ground ay ang illegal buhis, na kung saan hindi po napag-uusapan rito. 'Yung pong illegal buhis na 'yan, ang malaking kumukuha ng aming pong total share at sales. Ang gobrahso po namin lumiliit, gawa po niyang ano, 'yung illegal buhis.
Sabo ba 'yung nagpapabukis sa Laguna?
Meron po kaming mga alam na, na nagpabukis dyan.
Sinong operator ng buhis dun?
Hindi ko po masabi sa inyo kung sino, pero ang ating pong P and P, alam po nila kung sino-sino po 'yan. Hindi po, hindi po natin sinisisi ang P and P, pagkat sa kanila po ay may record, nun po, may record. Even po ang ating ano, ang ating Regional Directors Office ay may record po sa kanila, kung sino-sino po ang.
Mister Olivares? Direct competitor niyo 'yung mga buhis, ito 'yung nagbabawas, nakakabawas na malaki sa inyong dapat na degenerate na revenues. Eh, hindi niyo alam kung sino 'yung kalaban niyo dun?
Ah, bibigay po namin sa inyo.
Sabi mo na lang dito.
May, mahirap po sabihin, mahirap po naman, kalalagaya po natin.
Eh, 'yung pulis nga, tinuturo mo eh.
Hindi ko po tinuturo ang pulis, pagkat, ang palagay ko po, ang pulis siya ay may kaalam man po rito. Alam nila kung sino, hindi po, wala pong alam sa buhis, ngunit alam nila kung maari ang mga kung sino-sino 'yan.
Ang tinatanong ko po sa inyo is, sa ngayon panahon, kasya papuwayan ten percent, ah, dahil meron na po kayong kalaban na buhis. Opo. Kasya pa rin.
Opo.
So, kayo nakikipaglaban dun sa illegal?
Yes.
Opo. Now, may I ask the PCSO, how do you monitor whether the, the, the fifty-five percent of net sales is given by the AACs? Ano po ang monitoring mechanism niyo?
Ah, based on the reports submitted to us.
Sino po ang nagsasumit na report? 'Yung AACs?
Opo, 'yung AACs.
And, ah, you believe in the reports that they are giving you? Na 'yung, ah, forty-one point two zero five percent, which is net of prize fund, ay binibigay nila dun sa nananalo?
Sir, so far naman po sir, ah, based on the submitted nilang reports sir, ah, 'yun po 'yung pinagbabasihan po namin.
Had it ever occurred to you, na 'yung sinabi ni Mister Bago, ah, at saka si Mister Ang, eh, nangyayari ngayon, na hindi nairereport sa inyo, twenty percent lang 'yung, if I heard Mister Bago write a while ago, twenty percent lang 'yung nai, nairerimit o nirereport po sa inyo? Hindi po kayo, ah, nakapag-isip na ganun, na pwedeng mangyari 'yun, sa, sa, hindi na po kayo naglagay ng check and balance mechanism niyo?
Your Honor, ah, ah, ang, ang, parin na sinap.
Please, respond after that, Mister Ang.
Sir, um, basta, sir, ang basis ko, ah, ko lang po sir, 'yung sinasumit nilang reports sa amin, sir.
'Yun lang, and you have not established any means na 'yung forty-one percent to sir, ah, forty-one point two percent na ibibigay dun sa mga nananalo? Dahil napakalaki ito na playing ground ng isang AAC eh. Pwedeng, ah, siguro, 'yung, ah, nasa papel, ibibigay kung nanalo. Pero 'yung other side of it, na hindi, hindi 'yung authorized receipt ang, kwan, kagaya ng pinakita ni Mister Bago, mas malaking portion 'yun, eighty percent, sabi nga niya eh. So napakalaking playing ground, itong forty-one point two percent. If you do not establish any check and balance, tama po ba?
Opo, sir.
Yes, pero wala po kayong ginawa?
Sir, ah, wala po. Sir, actually sir, kasi 'yung sinasumit nilang reports sa amin, binibigay ko rin naman po sir sa COA. And sa accounting po namin, niri require po nila 'yun.
Ah, you are the head of the SMC, right?
SMC, sir.
Yes, and, ah, pursuant to your unapproved, ah, IRR, kayo po ang may function na oversee ng operations ng STL. Tama?
Opo.
So kasama po sa function niyo, natignan na 'yung operation ng STL maachieve 'yung inyong objective.
Opo, sir.
Oh, pero sa nagikita ko, ah, maaring nilolo ko na po kayo ng mga AACs, hindi pa rin 'yun naachieve 'yung inyong goal. Kasi wala kayo ngang monitoring check and balance ito eh, itong forty-one point two percent. Wala. Kasi, tingnan mo 'yung prenepresent na evidensya ni Congressman Espino at saka Congressman Billywerte, mga papilitos na nga ng wedding 'yun eh, na nalagay dun. At sinabi ni Mister Bago, na eighty percent 'yung napupunta dun, twenty percent lang 'yun nirereport sa inyo. And yet, wala akong nakikita, na, that's why I want to see your, your submitted IRR, kung meron ng mechanism para dito. So I don't think you have one. Pangalawa, ah, dun sa charity fund, thirty percent of net sales, ah, meron pong six point five percent para po dun sa mga government offices, tama? What is the basis of this? When in fact, it is for charity fund. Magbibigay ba ng charity 'yung congressional district, 'yung Philippine National Police? Kasi, ah, I have to admit, Mister Chair, that I are, I received one, one check from PCSO, ah, which I have returned, simply because I do not know how to liquidate it. Because there's no district treasurer, there's only municipal treasurer, provincial treasurer, and the finance center of the P and P, but there's no such thing as a district treasurer, wala naman. Designated treasurer, 'yung Congress eh, congressional district, tama po ba? Oh, papano niya matatanggapin niya? Paano 'yung liliquidity? Sasama, sasama pa siya pagsabit sa inyo? True, Mister Chair. You know, it seems that, kayo, Miss Gabuyo, parang you're simply mechanical, ano? Wala kang effort, wala kang initiative, para sinusunod mo na lang, kung ano na lang 'yung dumating, sige. Kung ano sabihin ng, ah, AAC, sige, sunod. Kung ano sabihin ng, ah, Kuydeklara, sige, sunod. Why is that? Wala na kayong sariling initiative, wala na sariling palo, parang, parang na kayong robot, di ba?
Sir, um, we discuss issues and concern po in the SMG, but, ah, kami po, nagrerecommend lang po kami sa board, sir. Sir, hindi po kasi kami 'yung final po lagi.
I know, but the power ng PCSO, much, much of the authority, nasaan 'yung dalawa ni GM Balutan, we all know that. Maski hindi kami taga PCSO, alam namin na ang power dyan, nasa GM.
Opo.
Wala nga sa Chairman eh. Di ba?
Yes, sir. Sir, iniimplement lang po namin, sir, 'yung lahat po ng.
Sinasabi ng board.
Opo.
Di binalik mo rin dun sa, Mister Chair, can I say something? 'Yung, 'yung regarding Mister Chair dun sa issue na ni raised ni Congressman Espino, no, nasa Pangasinan, na similar to Cam, sir, ito po, papilitos, ah, sa nadito ang COA. Ah, nakalagay po dun sa IRR, dapat better instrument eh, is this a better instrument? COA approve ba'to? Well, number one, this is not the PCSO approved, the more reason, this is not COA approved. What's the ano, what's the opinion of COA about this? Because this is happening probably in a lot of areas eh, this is the, how can we monitor the right sales, the documentary stock, based on these papilitos?
Your Honor, the first time that we, ah, audited, audited this STL operation, 'yan ya agad 'yung ang una naming napansin, how can we be assured that the reports being submitted by the AACs are the correct revenues earned by each of them?
So, so ma'am, binigay niyo na ng, ah, nabigay niyo na ng observation?
No, not yet, not yet. We're still, ah, ongoing by our.
Pero ma'am, the STL has been going on since Febru, January last year, ah, it's in comment upon you. Dapat nagkaroon na kayo ng year-end report man lang regarding this. Because, ah, we do not subscribe to the statements of AGM Gabuyo na palaging board, 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 where it's part, part of your mandate as a head of the, ano, SMG. Na hindi na dapat manggaling kay Congressman Espino sa amin, na meron mga ganitong ano maliang, di ba? Dapat kayo na nagkasumit na nito? Ah, dapat initiative, trabaho niyo po'to. Di ba? Ah, AGM, can you answer that, Mister Chair? May we ask her to answer?
Correct po, sir.
So aside from Pangasinan, Camarinisur, ano pa ba ang mga probinsya na gumagamit nito, papilitos?
Sir, lahat po sila gumagamit po, sir, na.
So then that's a problem, because, you know, we cannot monitor sales, this is not a better instrument, this is not accountable for, then lumalabas talaga na, well, the continued operation of STL is, ah, wet eh, illegal gambling, nilolo po ang gobyerno po. So malinaw na malinaw po kasi, ah, let's say na merong honest na AAC, but once you allow them to use forms like this, eh, there's a lot of leg room para mandaya po sila eh. Di ba po, ah, 'yung sinabi po kanina, bakit ang, ah, ang lotto na ayos niyo naman? Bakit hindi niyo gayahan 'yung sistema ng lotto na, ah, authorize areas, then 'yung form, accountable form, may watermark, then 'yung issue dun sa STL na bahay-bahay, may, may technology na manay, sinabi ko rin, smartphone, wireless printer, bakit hindi niyo po gawin 'yun? Kasi kung gag, ginagawa natin 'yung, gagawin niyo 'yung IRR, nasabi niyo na nagsumit na kayo sa Office of the President, with all these issues being raised in this hearing and the congressional hearings, dapat by now, ah, alam na niyo na 'yung mali, hindi po tama 'yung sagot ng, ah, ninyo, Mister Chair, nasagot nila, na pinag-aaralan, ongoing, siguro by now, ah, we, we already know the problem, Mister Chair eh. Salamat po. I believe Congressman Akop still has the floor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Ah, I would just like to continue with the, with the, ah, allocation of the revenues. Kasi po nakalagay dito, ah, city municipality, congressional district, provincial government, Philippine National Police, ah, starting from their national headquarters to the CIDG provincial, meron pong prosceto. But 'yung tanong kanina ni, ah, Miss Sandra Kam, 'yung pong bakit ita-charge 'yung ten percent gross sales documentary stamp tax sa charity? 'Yun po ang kuwan, was there a board resolution to this effect?
Not, not during our, not during our time. Why don't you find out kung meron board resolution?
Yes, sir. There's a board resolution to that effect, sir.
Sumagot? Tatanong ka kanina ni Congressman Akop, hindi ka sumasagot. Ngayong hinahanap namin 'yung board resolution, saka naman sasagot.
Ah, if, if ever there is a board resolution, ah, may ano, since you implement the, the board resolution, tama po, di po ba? Kayo ni Gerald Balutan, you implement the resolutions of the board, tama po?
O, tama po.
Pwede ko bang malaman sa inyo, dahil wala po si Gerald Balutan, ano 'yung sabi mo, Chairman Finiri, nag-escape and evasion? Escape and evasion, 'yun ang terminology natin 'yung umiiwas, di ba? Escape and evasion. 'Yung giti mo eh, iba eh. Di ba, ah, Madam Gabuyo? Dapat binasa mo 'yung resolution na 'yan, bago mo i-implementa.
Opo, sir.
Yes, ano ang dahilan ng board? Bakit i-grinad nila ito? Pwede ko po bang malaman? Dahil ito napakalaking pawas dun sa charity fund. So there must be an overriding reason why the board approved that it, the ten percent documentary stamp tax be charged to the charity fund, not elsewhere? Pwede ko po bang malaman?
Sir, I think, ah, meron po yatang, um, parang opinion from, ano, ah, no, it's an op, a discussion po noon na, ah, I, I, sir, parang, I'm not that, ah, ano, sir, sa, um, legal po yata, sir, 'yung ano.
Mister Chair, I asked this during the congressional hearing. Ah, why are you using, ah, payment for documentary stamp under the charity fund? Ang sabi po niyo, ah, AGM Gabuyo, under oath, na meron kayong legal opinion. Ang sabi namin nung last hearing sa Congress, paying kami ng kopiya, ngayon nandito na naman, tinatanong po ni Congressman Akop. And it seems that you're not sure, and yet during the congressional hearing, you answered with confidence na meron kaming panghahawakan dyan. And in fact, when I asked you, saan mo kukunin 'yung ten percent additional based on the train law? Ang sabi mo, kukunin mo sa dokumenta, ay sa charity fund.
Sir, correction lang po, at the time po sa Congress po, ang sumagot po nun is AGM Patchag.
Attorney, can you respond to the question of Congressman Akop? Is there such a legal opinion?
Um, we were able to obtain a copy, but I haven't read it, sir. It appears that it was issued in nineteen ninety-five. Um, sir, it's minutes of meeting, April twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-five, EPL room, um. The attendees are Honorable Antonio Carpio, Presidential Legal Counsel, Honorable Manuel Morato, Chairman and Acting GM of PCSO, Mister Jimmy Williams, AGM for Finance, Attorney George Manuel, Chief of Staff, PCSO, Attorney Manikad, Corporate Board Secretary, Mister Gregorio Vicente, Consultant PCSO, Miss Nona Alapan, Corporate Auditor and Assistant Commissioner, Commissioner on Audit, ah, April twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-five, sir. On the issue of documentary stamp tax, the first item taken up in the meeting is a documentary stamp tax on the sale of lotto tickets. After deliberation on the pertinent provisions in the above cited laws, I, sorry. Um, Sec, Secretary Antonio Carpio, Carpio agreed with Jimmy Williams.
Attorney Shong, ah, excuse me, nineteen ninety-five, wala pang STL?
No, no, sir.
'Yung pag-uusapan dyan sa board resolution, lotto?
Yes, sir.
Bakit? Extended sa STL 'yung, ah, 'yung board resolution, nagre-refer sa lotto?
Um.
Kayo na lang naginterpret na po pwede extend sa STL, 'yung sa doc stamps?
Mister Chair, if I may add though, ah, during the time of Chairman Malik Siden, there was an expose, eh, either, I read in the papers, that they also use the charity fund for the documentary stamp tax, ah, due, ah, for payment by AACs, ginamit sa charity fund, ah, is COA, and are you familiar with that? Ginamit niyo based on that legal opinion na it does not apply? Pang, binayaran niyo 'yung, ah, over one billion documentary stamp tax na dapat binayaran ng mga dating AAC? Are you familiar with that?
I was informed there's an Ombudsman case, no, regarding the, the remarks, the statement made by Congressman Billywerte. Meron na paila dyan. So, ano gagawin ng board ngayon? Will you correct this? By another board resolution or, actually, hindi naman talaga nagre-refer sa STL eh, sa lotto, nung binasa niyo, lotto eh.
Mister Chair, may I point out, that's not a board resolution, that's just a minutes of a meeting. So that's not binding. So, eh, that's not binding per se, so even for lotto per se, ah, that's just, ah, you know, a discussion, but, ah, it's not approved by the, the board during nineteen ninety-five, is that correct, attorney?
Yes, seems so.
So that's, that is just a discussion, that is not a legally binding document, that is not a basis for PCSO then, and until now, to use, ah, charity fund to pay lotto, and more specifically STL, documentary DSTs.
Yes, sir, um, I may be allowed to read the discussion, sir, so that we will all be. so that we will all be informed of what transpired. And AGM Jimmy Williams maintains that the documentary stamp tax should be computed on gross sale, but the same should be taken out from the charity fund. According to him, the operating fund is not enough to shoulder the documentary stamp tax. He stressed that if the documentary stamp tax is to be shouldered by the operating fund and not the charity fund, the Lotto project would die. "We should not kill the goose that lays the golden egg," he added. Attorney Manikad secure a contrary op-- asserts a contrary opinion. He maintains that charging the documentary stamp tax to the charity fund is violated of the charter. The charter, according to him, is clear in saying that the charity cases involving health programs can be charged from the charity fund. Secretary Antonio Carpio agreed with Jimmy Williams. He said the documentary stamp tax would go to the national coffers. If anybody should complain, it should be the Office of the President because in effect, the Office of the President would lose control over these funds. This is just placing one's money from one pocket to another, besides the BIR agreed with such formula. Eventually, a consensus was reached that the documentary stamp tax be charged from the charity fund.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Was that the meeting or the decision of the meeting, was that, shall we say, affirmed by a board resolution?
We will check our records, sir. We just obtained a copy.
Yeah, subsequently, there's an executive order issued. To that effect, di ba? Yes. Wala ba dyan sa documents niyong? Executive Order Number 357-E. Which, yeah, Series of 1996, which approved the allocation of a 5% share for local government units from the Lotto charity fund. Anyway, it also includes the issue of docstamps, di ba? Meron ba? Wala?
That executive orders refers to the share of local government units in the sales--
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Congressman Akop.
Even if that is so, these pronouncements refer to Lotto. STL was never existed then. And therefore, how can the lawyers of, you know, PCSO, you know, use this decision for STL? Ano po 'yung legal basis why you can use 'yung pronouncement sa Lotto sa STL? Ano pong legal basis? That's another legal issue, di ba, Attorney Suntay?
Uh, Your Honors, could only assume that because it's part of the mandate of the PCSO to run and regulate games of chance like Lotto and STL, they have quite similar, the same ruling, considering that it's the same, they're the same gaming-- while it's a different gaming platform, it's--
Abugado nga, Attorney. Ah, mabuti pa siguro Attorney Suntay, sinabi mo na lang na hindi po pwede eh. Dahil iba po yata 'yung pinag-aralan o itinuro ng mga professor ko, o kaya tulog ako nung ako'y nag-aaralan, lo? Ganun po yun, di po ba? You're putting a mango and a sandal together na eh. So, anyway, let's leave that, Mr. Chair. So that leaves us 12.9%. Now, in the hearings and so far as bills wherein funds will be taken from the PCSO-- matanong ko nga po kayo, nagsasummit ba kayo ng inyong kuwan, ng inyong position paper sa Congress, both in the Senate and the House? Kung merong bills na nagsasabi na the funds will be taken from the funds of the PCSO? Kayo po ba ay sumisipot dun sa mga hearings para sabihin ninyo 'yung position paper? Tatanong lang simple, nakapagsabit ba kayo ng position paper ninyo sa Senate or sa lower house? Meron ba?
Position paper, when we submit our position, if we are asked, we always tell them that there are pre-existing programs that we already are implementing. Maybe what we can do is harmonize that with what we have in order to save our resources. So, that has been the position of the charity sector, sir. Thank you.
Am I made to believe na lahat po nung naypasa na batas na pupundohan po ninyo?
Yes, possibly. Because at the end of the day, if the bill becomes a law and PCSO is mandated, that's why it's called mandatory contribution. But PCSO is trying its best to mini-advest and comply with those mandatory contributions, sir, Your Honor. Thank you. Your Honor. Yes, in regards to the question of Congressman Akop earlier, 'yung basis unong doc stamp tax, I believe it's under Section 190 of the National Internal Revenue Code which states, "Section 2 of Exec-- as amended by-- Section 2 of Executive Board, Number 194 Series of 1987, is hereby further amended to read as follows. Section 190, "Stamp tax on high-alai horse race tickets, Lotto, or other authorized number games on high-alai horse race tickets, Lotto, or other authorized numbers game shall be collected a documentary stamp tax."
Sir, nasa National Internal Revenue Code. Kukolekta ng documentary stamp tax?
Opo.
Sinabi ba na sa charity fund kukunin?
Hindi. So it was placed similarly, considering that-- di ba pagka-- if there is a enumeration--
So prospective 'yung application?
Yes, sir, unless it is repealed or amended.
See, Attorney Suntay, sabi mo wala na mapagkukunan na iba, di po ba kaya sa charity?
So hindi ko naman ho sinabi. I'm just saying 'yung basis siguro, nung previous action ng administration of PCSO. As I mentioned, I've been badly here for seven weeks and we've tried as much as possible to correct the previous mistakes. In fact, just recently, we have opened ourselves to the risk of being cited for contempt because of a pending case in which an art C of Makati issued an injunction forcing the PCSO to buy paper at an onerous price.
Alam mo, Attorney, during the time of General Axon as the Chief Philippine National Police, ako po 'yung controller, ako po 'yung gumagawa ng budget eh. Pwede, hindi naman, pwede naman niligay niyo 'yung documentary stamp tax under gross sales and retail receipts eh, kaagad, di po ba?
As I mentioned--
Kasi finance malabo dati eh.
Wala, ako doon and I could only--
Bakit 'yung mandate pa ninyo, ang binawasan ninyo, dun po niya niyo chinards 'yung documentary stamp tax? When in fact, you could have included there as number two under gross sales and retail receipts, printing cost, at saka documentary stamp tax, para hindi na maapektuhan 'yung pagsilbi ninyo dun sa masa? Yes?
Yes, sir. I could only surmise or based on dun sa statement nga ng former AGM Jimmy Williams, when he said that documentary stamp tax should be computed on gross sales, but the same should be taken out from the charity fund. According to him, the operating fund, which is 15%, is not enough to shoulder the docstamps. Siguro, I'm not justifying the actions, sir, I'm just stating siguro the basis of what they did.
Iba na po 'yung sitwasyon ng PCSO nung 1996. Iba na po ang sitwasyon ng PCSO ngayong 2018. You know, I also heard a contrary opinion and I think it is, it would be better if we adopt the contrary opinion insofar as that discussion--
Yes, sir. There was a contrary opinion. However, Secretary Carpio concord with the first initial opinion, sir.
While we, 'yung ano kasi 'yung basis to charge meron sa, ano, dun sa Internal Revenue Code, but 'yung basis to charge, 'yun ang kinukwasyon ni Congressman Akop. But moving forward, ang bigger problem na hindi pa niyo sinasagot hanggang ngayon, 'yung issue I raised earlier, saan niyo kukunin 'yung additional 10% based on the train law? Because there's a BIR revenue regulation issued, Revenue Regulations Number 4-2018, already charging 20 centavos per peso dun sa tickets high-alai Lotto. So tanong ko, I'm sure diniskusyon nato, saan niyo ito charge? Kasi 'yung, when we had the congressional hearing, ang sabi sa congressional charity fund, that 'yun na nga eh, saan?
Yes, sir. During the last board meeting, we also tackled this dahil sa laki ng impact na magiging additional. Napag-usapan rin, different formulas at kung saan-san pagkakapagkukunan ito, it was discussed that it would be shared from the three. These were part of the suggestion, napag-hati-hatiin coming from the Administration Fund, Operation Fund dun sa prices and then sa charity fund. Then it was also suggested that what we could do to cushion the effect is increase the price of ticket by 2 pesos. That way, 'yung increase unong additional 10% would be minimal in its effect.
Hindi, hindi kasi ano, ano, while you are thinking of a solution to that, the operators are currently operating on the old formula. While you are mandated to pay the new tax train law, the AACs are operating on the revenue allocation based on the old formula. So, there's a legal problem there and you cannot just say take out from the charity price fund. Kasi legally, there is a competition in the price fund. 'Yung World Lottery Association rules, meron 'yang RTP na tinatawag. Are you familiar with the RTP?
No, not really.
Then you should, because you're a director of PCSO. Ang RTP is what you call return to player. When you devise a game, there is an RTP ruling. Are you a member of the World Lottery Association?
Me personally, sir.
No, PCSO.
Yes, it is.
Yes, then you should follow that rule on RTP, responsible gaming mandates, that there should be RTP, return to player. Ngayon kung 2 ball 3 polibang RTP niyan. And you cannot just say tanggalin mo sa, sa ano 'yan, sa price. Kasi malol-- lihi na ang income niya kasi sabi ng tao, 'yung chances of winning malles. And you cannot say 'yung bet i-increase to 2 pesos because the law states for every peso. So whether you increase it to 2 to 3 pesos, it's still 20%. So I think, Mr. Chair, this is a bigger problem that we have to resolve. While there is a new train law and revenue regulation, up to now, while the AACs are operating on the old revenue, hindi pa nila neresolve. You have to resolve this as soon as possible.
Yes, sir. 'Yun nga 'yung ginagawa namin, Mr. Chairman, through you. Because the budget, the annual budget of the PCSO was passed last year. It was passed prior to the passage of the new train law. So it was not taken into consideration.
But ano na, Mr. Chair, may I correct? The payment of the DST should not be-- the budget of the PCSO has no connection whatsoever. The DST is based on sales.
Hindi, kaya nga ho, pero 'yung DST ho, kukunin ho, kagaya pag sinabi natin, hindi, kunin niyo sa operation cost, nadawanan 'yung sa operation. So definitely, it will have effect on the appropriations or allocations of the funding.
No, no, I'll then to disagree with you, Chair. Kasi the basis of the DST, kung merong BIR dito, is based on sale. Each doc-- kaya nga, documentary stamp tax eh, meaning each document should be charged.
Before we resolve this, you may hear from the mayors present, 'yung representatives ng mga local government units. Ano bang thoughts niyo rin sa mga nangyayari discussion?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman. I'm Vice Mayor Julia Roswellio, former City Mayor of Santa Rosa City and now the original Chairman of the Vice Mayor's League of the Philippines Regional Department. Um, I'd just like to be clarified po sa, na kasi po, kanina po, nakiginig ko sa mga usapan natin, no? Napakarami pong nababanggit. Pero ngayon po, given the chance, kami mga nasa babaas, local officials, no? We were given a chance to speak para po naman malaman namin kung ano 'yung, kung ano po bang role ng LZO dito po sa PCSO. Kasi parang wala na po kaming role dito. Parang napabaliw na po 'yung karapatan ng mga elected officials, especially the local executive, the presiding officer as the Vice Mayor and the Council. Unang-una po sa la-- tungkol po sa business permits, no? Na kung saan ito nga po, I was there dun po sa Congress when they had a meeting, a hearing po, na tinanong ko rin po, pero I was not answered by the general manager with regards to that. And we were praying na sana po mabigyan po kami ng kasagutan dahil parang wala na pong silbi oayan na pong karapatan ng mga lokalidad with regards to the STL. Sa pagkata-- ang sabi po ng mga AACs sa amin, no? Ah, wala tayong pong karapatang taintuin or kahit kumuha ng business permit na mga AACs sa mga lokalidad. Where in fact, alam naman po natin na lahat po ng nagnene-gosyo kumikita sa isang lokalidad. Kailangan po dumaan sa proseso ng pag-aapply ng business permit.
Vice, I've discussed that matter with my legislative staff. We will seriously consider that proposal, ano?
Yes, Your Honor.
After all, they're earning revenues, they're earning income within your respective locality, di ba?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
That you require them to secure a business permit?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Your knowledge is the presence of the Majority Leader, Senator Tito Soto. Mayor Zablán? Santa Barbara? Ikaw ba tumalo sa klase ko doon?
Yes, sir. Ako po 'yung tumalo kay General Bilasco. Thank you po. Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Carlito Zablán, Deputy 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 Santa Barbara, a former president of the Pangasinan Mayor's League and my six terms. Uh, Mr. Chairman? Ang dahilan po kaya kami nandito. 'Yun lang po ang concern namin ng mga mayors. Totoo po 'yung sinabi ni Vice Mayor Roswellio na parang baliw wala na po kami doon. Kasi nga po, pumasok po tong Speed Gaming, ang STL, na wala na po silang consultation sa amin, ang napakasakit po, ang sinasabi po nila na hindi na raw para kailangan kumuha ng permits kasi ang permit daw nila is national. Kaya hindi na raw kailangan kumuha ng permit. Ang sabi ko nga sa kanila nung pumasok sila doon, kung 'yung sari-sari store nga, kumukuha ng permits. Tapos ang masakit pa sa sinasabi nila, may umiikot na tao nila na kung pahihintay daw kami, is maumbots ng kami. How true. Bakit naman ganun? Na tinatakot pa kami. Tapos, pangalawa po, pati 'yung mga kabuo nagko-complain kasi originally, ang binibigay is 7%. Ngayon, 5% na lang po ang binibigay. 'Yun lang po, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Binibigay kanino 'yung 5%?
Sa mga kabuo po. Tapos, sa bagatlo po, ang sabi po nila, kaya po, naligal na po, meron pong 3% na binibigay po sa LZO. Pero hanggang ganun po, ni Single Sinbapo po, wala pong kami natatanggap.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman, 'yung 3% po kasi na pinag-uusapan, it's been going around since last year po. Na kung saan, hinahanap po namin. We would like to ask, Mr. Chairman, the PCSO, sino po ba ang dapat mag-remit niyan? Is it the AACs or is it the PCSO? Kasi po, maglupan rin po kami sa baba eh, no? Maglup po sa amin sa baba. And nakalagay po dun kanina, sa ano kanina, na 'yung local government, 'yung municipality or city, meron pong 3%. So simula po la sir, hanggang ngayon po, wala pa, hindi ko malinaw sa amin kung sino 'yung magbibigay o magre-remit niyan, is it the AACs or PCSO?
Question?
Yes, sir. It's PCSO who will give the share to the local government units.
How come? Isang taon na raw, wala sila natatanggap na share. Saan napupunta ngayon yun? PNP lang yata binibigay niyo eh. How about the provincial government? Eh, ata nga na share.
Actually, sir, pati Kongres man binibigyan, pero nakalagay sa palang namin, sinusuri namin, kami ng Congressman Akop dahil wala naman kaming resibong-- pero sa probinsya, sir, nabibigay yata sila, diretso sa treasury.
Yeah.
Pero ang problema, sir, dito, sino ba nagko-compute kung magkanong 3%? Siro nakakalam nun? 'Yung AAC lang. Kuya Pimarangan nila, dinadayan nila eh, 'yung pack. Kaya sir, 'yung naging problema, sir, kaya pwede doon sa mga-- babalang kasi natin bataas. Iimpol talaga natin sila local government kaysa lang makatulong malaki sa kumanang kontrol nito, pati sa accounting nito.
Attorney Shong?
It is PCSO, sir, who computes the branch operations sector based on the gross sales of the SLEACs. Uh, it is PCSO, sir, who computes the branch operations sector based on the gross sales of the SLEACs.
Eto, sometimes saying, kung yung mga resibo ang ganun eh, papilito lang eh, paano yung makokompute niyo kung magkano talagang koleksyon? Kaya sabi talang pambukis na yun eh. Ang nagbubukis mismo, yung mismong iisi, di ba? Hindi, actually, sabi nila nagbubukis yung iba. Actually, sila mismo nagbubukis. Yung iba na ano, yun yung papilitong yung bukis yun eh, para sa bukis yun. Para kita nila nung iisi, sarili nila yun. Hindi nila pinapasok sa ano, hindi nila pinapasok sa koleksyon nila para sa PCSO. Ganun lang, simple. So, when siya magkokompute ngayon yung three percent nila, sa local government.
Sir, napansin ko na kailangang i-raise na, ano? The more we move on, it seems that we were moving backwards because there's so many issues, we're drowned out. Wala, lunod tayo sa mga issues na hindi natin ma-resolve. And kanina, si Mr. Ang was proposing something, pero hindi namang concrete eh. Can you propose something concrete as a solution to all these problems?
Yes, Your Honor. Sabi ko nga, mas kay paulit-ulit, hindi na masu-solve talaga yun ngayon.
That, the problem is, what are the concrete solutions para ma-solve itong problema?
Ma, ang, ang suggestion ko dyan, talagang, mag-oper talaga ang gobyerno na. Pero kailangan, ang problema kasi rito sa laruto, with risk. So, kailangan may formula dyan, which is nasa isip ko, kailangan, kailangan makausap kami ng gobyerno na maayos kung paano ko gagoon. Kasi ang luto kasi, walang tala.
We're crafting a law eh.
Yes, Your Honor.
Pwede ba sa mag-uusap kayo na PCSO, nang hindi namin na-incorporated sa field?
Yes, Your Honor.
It's a public hearing, and whatever you will discuss with PCSO should not be kept from the public because it's a public hearing. So, we want to hear from you. Ano ba yung sinasabi mong concrete solution para ma-resolve yung issues ng remittances?
Yes. Ah, ito pa, ang, ang kailangan lang po, ganito, sasayang ko lang, yung sa, ulit nung, yung sa STL, ah, sa Swift State kasi, tsaka sa luto. Wala ka kasi problema dahil lahat ng total sis, eto kasi totoong income lang yan eh. Yung tinatanong ni ikaw kanina, ano ba ang income talaga ng PCSO sa STL? Ang, ang income niyo rin is twelve point nine lang, wala na iba. Dun na kinukuha po yung mga pang ospital, yung pang ambulansya, wala na kaming mga income kung hindi yung twelve point nine. Dating seven percent yung ginawa niyo twelve point nine. Tapos, yung sa, yung sa luto naman, kung titingnan niyo yung luto tsaka Swift State, ang totoong income niyo rin is eight billion a year lang, tignan niyo. Yun ang net niyo, yun yung thirty percent na, yung iba kasi pay out yun, tsaka expenses eh. Ngayon, kung, eto po kasi ang risk niya, kaya tignan nga eh. Ano ang suggestion ko, para pakinabangan ng gobyerno talaga lahat oh? Ang kaila, hindi, hindi talaga pwede mag-oper ng mga gambling law dito, kasi PCSO talaga dapat mag-oper. Ngayon, kung ano yung ibang dapat pag-usapan, kailangan iupo muna, tsaka ako sasabihin, kung anong mga dapat pag-usapan, hindi pwede on air. Kasi, magkakaroon pa ng, ng pag-uusap pa, Your Honor. Sabi ko, titignan pa yung legality. Pag-uusapan yung solution.
Dapat talaga, tignan yung legality.
Pero not on air.
Yung itong kinakaroon natin, eh, kung tatago mo, hindi.
No, no, Your Honor, hindi ko tinatago, kailangan muna, Your Honor, pag-usapan muna, nang hindi ganito. Para, para isang declaration lang, kung ano yung talagang legal. Kasi hindi pa ako abugado, para sabihin ko, kagad ko na nasa isip ko, kaku-sult ako muna sa gobyerno, tama ba to? Plus, kowa, titimplahin, pagnapag nabuyon, tsaka ipaimplement. Kasi, kasi kailangan ng government without risk. Eh, ang problema sa laruto with risk, kasi nakafix dividend. Ang, ang ano kasi, ang luto kasi, minus, minus sa, minus sa charity, divided by the revenue tickets. Dito hindi, nakafix. Nakafix dito na eight thousand per ten pesos. So, kung magko-oper PCSO, may risk niya, may formula, yun ay tuturoho. Para makinabang nung gusto ko na yun tama, kapraniya. Ginagaranti ko, naghamo kasi si Balutan, na sinabi niya na wala makakagawa nun, eh, umoo na nga ako. So, siguro mapakinggan, mapakinggan din ng, ng presidente, kung ano yung, kung ano dapat. Tsaka nakakapagtaka rin po ito, si, si Balutan niya po, nung, nung, para makadagdag din sa pag-iisip natin. Na makita kami nung ano, nung September fourteen, two thousand sixteen. Nakakapagtaka naman to si Balutan, na sabi niya sa akin, Mr. Ang, mabuti naman, dumating ka. Etos si Corpus nakurap na, ng kabila. So, ibig sabihin nun, akin siya sa STL. Pero nakakapagtaka po nun, nung maparalay si Corpus siya, ayun, nagti-pagtanggol ng STL, bakit ganun? Hindi ba? Tapos, sinasabi rin po niya na, namatapang siya, marinsya, dalis siya sa Iraq. Tapos kaya sinabi niya, kaya Kongresman Espino, paano ko babanggain ng mga gambling lord? Hindi naman, parang hindi ata nagtatama yun. So, makikita niyo yung corruption dito, na siya nagti-pagtanggol ngayon. So, yung tinatanong niyo po, Your Honor, na, ibibigay ko po yun, kung isang pag-uusap, kung ano formula dyan, sa isang meeting po na, na hindi na on air, na ganito. Para, para mapag-usapan din kung ano pa ibal legality niya, ganun, hindi pa ako abugado. Thank you po.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir.
Mr. Chairman, hindi pa siya nag-take oath?
Hmm, sige, come sec.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth if this Senate inquiry?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Aguilar, ikaw ang AAC sa Iloilo?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Senator Soto, and, yes, speakers, and the leadership of PCSO. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samuel Aguilar. I'm the President and the Chief Operating Officer of Eagle Crest Gaming Holding Corporation. I think I am the same person being referred to by the, one of the Director of PCSO in a very, yes, ma'am. In a very sensitive and, and embarrassing accusation. Anyway, uh, I, I applied for PCSO and submitted and complied with all the clearances and documents set by the leadership of the Board of Directors and the PCSO itself. When we were selected as the AAC for Iloilo Province, with, with, with hopes that we will be a partner, the partner of the government for this business. We have no other intention but to run the STL business in the Iloilo Province in, in the most effective manner. I don't know Mrs. Director Sandra Kam. In fact, when, when she said that I was trying to shake her hands, because I, I, I seen her in the television, and I know that she's part of the directorship of the PCSO. And it's just a customary for me to shake hands and introduce myself to any, I think, members of the Board of Directors or any leadership in PCSO, not for anything else. I just wanted to clarify that I was never involved in drug trade. Nor, my name was included in the name, in, in the list, just like what Ms. Director Sandra Kam has, has said. I was never in the drug laser. In fact, I was an immigrant of the United Kingdom. I lived in the United Kingdom for the past sixteen years, eighteen years, seventeen years now. So, I don't know where those intelligence report is coming from, she's getting it. In fact, last Thursday, I just wanted to express my disappointment. Last Thursday, I even went to the office of Mrs. Sandra Kam, to the office of General. Yes, I may be frequently going to the office of General Balutan, not because I'm forging a deal or anything. I'm just asking for a medical help that is being required to me by my province. Because sometimes, the budget that's supposed to be given to the province run out because we only have like three hundred thousand pesos budgets every day. However, in, in order for me to, to cater for my, to, to give something in return to my province, I go directly to PCSO and ask for more help with regards to the, ano, medical.
How well do you know GM Balutan?
Uh, only when, when, when I applied for the PCSO, sir.
And yet, you frequent his office to lobby for some additional medical assistance for the province of Iloilo?
Because the person in charge, sir, in, in, in PCSO is there at the office of, at nine floor, sir.
Continue niya.
Okay.
Minakuha ka ba? Minakuha ka? Additional medical?
Uh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
How much were you able to?
Uh, sometimes they just call straight the, the patient, sir. Uh, sometimes they gave like, uh, parang, uh, depende sa pangangailangan, sir, yung ano, yung pasyente, sir.
How many times have you, were you able to?
Maybe twice or thrice, sir.
Hindi ka pa nasisiro?
Uh, maybe.
Kaya po kami, kami, malimit pa siro dyan.
Marami sir, marami din. Siguro, uh, ano sir, mga thirty percent out of one hundred.
Sige.
Can I answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I came here to say it by the invitation of the Honorable Chairman, and it's final to you, address the issue of a problem with the STL. I think that the issue of accusations being thrown to me by Ms. Sandra Kam is unprofessional because as member of the Board of Directors, or if there is any problems with me, as being the AAC of the Iloilo Province, she could have called me privately, or even called me at the board and asked me what's my involvement about the issues that she is throwing at me. And not gain the public highlights. I have family as well, sir. I have four children, and my, my, my children in London will not be happy about the accusation I'm receiving from this. So I think it's highly unfair that we being the AAC, and we're here to talk about STL, and we're being accused of something that we didn't do, we didn't do.
Have you had the previous experience in operating STL?
Uh, illegal, uh, illegal, ano sir, uh, because in the province of Iloilo before, there was no STL, sir.
Hindi nga.
I was involved in number games, sir.
What kind of, nung illegal pa?
No, wala pang illegal, sir.
Kaya nga, nung illegal pa.
Yes, sir.
Ano yung operation mo nun?
Uh, one to forty-three numbers, sir.
Waiting, one to forty-three?
One to forty, sir.
One to forty, how can you compete with one to thirty-seven?
Uh, we have two numbers and three number combinations, sir.
Ah, three numbers.
Just like what we are doing now.
So, dati kang illegal, pumasok ka sa legal.
Uh, you may say so, yes, sir.
Okay, sige, continue niya. You have anything more to say?
Well, there's only things that I have to say. I just wanted to clarify that maybe Ms. Sandra Kam is getting an information from, from people who are not happy with me, or some people who may have been part of the people who ambushed me last September twenty-five. And also, I just wanted to make it clear, ma'am, I don't have any involvement on that, ma'am.
Sige, Sandra.
Good afternoon, Your Honors. I have a paper here. And subject, who is Sam Aguilar, is currently the one who supplied volume of illegal drugs in Panay and in Negros Island. Subject was a former employee of National Belivid Prison on early nineties. He served as the Secretary of Retired General Vicente Vinarao, former Director of NBP. During his Aguilar stint at NBP, he had able to associate himself with the big-time drug personalities inside the Belivid. Aguilar was able to amass huge sum of money from the drug lords inside the penitentiary and was really involved in the legal drug trade all over the country. Secretly, when General Vinarao retired from NBP, year after Aguilar also goes out as employee of NBP and went abroad in London. Yun, totoo yun, na ang pamilya mo ay nasa London. Together with his families, and he stayed there for a while, but it still continues as the legal drug trade in the Philippines. In year 2012, when he came back to the Philippines, he was able to associate himself secretly with the new big-time drug lords incarcerated inside NBP, such as namely Peter Co. and Peter Lim, and continued his discreet illegal drug trade. Activities since he has an access inside NBP, being a former employee of said institution. Aguilar, aside from his NBP drug group contact, is also connected with the North Cotabato drug groups in Mindanao. He took advantage of being a brother-in-law of Toto Magundanato, the governor of Magindanao, for his younger sister is the second wife of the latter. Subject is also a member of Masonic organization, which he took advantage being a brother member of it. And aside from it, he, he is also an adopted honorary member of PNP A-class nineteen ninety. He joined those organization for his own purpose and advantage to strengthen his connection for his, for his illegal activities. Aguilar has a canteen or kitchenette inside Camp Krami, Quezon City, Quezon City named Eagle Crest, which he purposely rent it to be an instrument getting an association with PNP high-ranking officials of PNP National Headquarters. If given a chance, however, when President Duterte assumed his presidency and warned those drug lords publicly, Aguilar gave up his restaurant inside Camp Krami and sold it to high-ranking retired PNP general. Since it came to his knowledge that he was included secretly in the HBT list of the PNP on illegal drugs, for there were so many reports regarding his illegal drug distribution came into the attention of the PNP senior officers in Camp Krami. Subject has a penchant of name dropping the names of PNP generals in his illegal activity. Without them knowing what he was doing in your purpose, he has always pictures together with PNP high-ranking officers and men, and also people in the government, holding key positions, and show them purposely to his friends and contacts, just to let them know how well-connected he is for a reason. Sometime in 2013, Aguilar goes to Iloilo City and met Melvin Boyet Odicta Senior and negotiate the latter to supply him of illegal drugs. However, the negotiations was not go further for some personal reasons. However, in the late quarter of year 2014, Aguilar begin to supply half of Odicta's demand of illegal drugs. And further, in the last quarter of the year 2015, Aguilar was able to take over the overall operations, the overall preparations. Presently, Manolito Susano, take note of that name, Mr. Aguilar, is out on bail and cuddled by Sam Aguilar, and sometime spotted together with the latter in Iloilo and served as his driver bodyguard. Susano's live-in partner, Maria Victoria Leygon, also worked as Aguilar's trusted secretary.
Excuse me, what is the relevance ng mga revelations mo dito sa STL operation?
Ah, the, the relevance here is why GM Balutan had given this person a permit or a franchisee of the STL?
Pero again, si Ms. Caboya sasabihin, board yung, di ba?
Eh, sinungaling naman yan po, kaya nga dapat nakontempt na yan. We should contempt her really, Mr. Chairman, kasi lahat na lang.
Is there board resolution? To cover the franchise or the license to operate?
Yes, we have a board decision. Opo. Yan po ang rason, sir, kung bakit ko brinotap ito. Remember.
President, I'm also the chairman of the Public Order and Dangerous Drugs, so pwede mo i-take up na lang yan dun, siguro?
I will, I will po, sir. At ito rin lang. Kasi, magkaibigan sila ni GM Balutan, nung wala pa po kami, lalo ako, ay palagi siyang nanduon, nakikipag-inuman kay General Balutan sa ninth floor after office hours. At huwag ka nang magsinungaling, Mr. Aguilar. Magkausap tayo. Remember that I was one of those na nakadakit kung saan si Kerwin is pinos. And Kerwin is so alive in NBI. I can go there and get some, ano. So, Mr. Aguilar, it's a slap on the face of our beloved president na siya ay kasama ni Odicta, ni Mabilob, at Sam Aguilar ng Iloilo Province. Tapos, pinapasok ng Balutan na maging franchisee sa Iloilo Province, na ito dapat nag-countercheck muna siya. So, naawa ko sa ating pangulo na na-blind siya dito. It's a slap on the face, dahil ito siya na mismo ang nagsabi na isa ka sa nasa narcolist. Tapos, binigyan ka ngayon ng franchisee because of our friendship with General Balutan. Yun lang po.
Thank you very much, Congressman Biliberte.
Mr. Chair, kasi yung basic mandate po ng PCSO is really charity, but with all of this happening, napakaraming question. But since the Kowa is here, I would like to take the opportunity. Because while the issues raised by Congressman Aba po, habang bumabawas po yung pod sa charity, yung PCSO. 'yung PCSO continues to spend ah, you know, ah their funds with big Christmas parties, with ah unauthorized bonuses. Ah, the COA is here. Ah, di ba merong COA report on the five hundred million unauthorized bonuses ah given by ah the board to its employees?
Right. Your honor, that is prior years. I think that's 2010, nagkaroon ng final decision this year.
So, two, ah, ah, it's, I, I understand there was a 2016 ah COA report, madam. Five hundred million, madam. You're not updated.
Yeah, yeah.
Five hundred million COA report on unauthorized bonuses.
Yes, your honor.
And prior to that, there was a pending one over a billion already. And that's, that already happened during the time of the, of General Balutan and the, the si Director. Maybe you can shed light. Because wh- while the, nadi-deplete 'yung charity, nagpa-party po kayo ng mahal, then 'yung nagbibigay kayo ng unauthorized bonuses, because this is in aid of legislation, no? Gusto lang namin ma-sagutin niyo po 'yung issue na yan. Bakit? Why did you authorize all these unauthorized bonuses and what, what are you doing to correct this?
Mr. Chair, 'yung bonus ba last year?
Hindi, 2016.
Oh, kakau po ko lang, Mr. Chair?
Hindi, wala siya.
November lang.
Nagreto just for the information of this committee. Ah, PCSO's unauthorized pay package in 2016 include one hundred fifty-one million in Christmas bonuses, one hundred twenty-three point eight million in educational assistance bonuses, seventy-one million in grocery bonuses, sixty point twenty-seven million in weekly draw allowances, twenty-seven point five million in hazard pay, and twenty-three point three million in revenue performance incentive pay, which is illegal and COA already ah raised the red flag.
Yes, your honor. May, and may, na- issuehan na ho yun ang notice of disallowance that they are currently on appeal.
But this is ah, this is a big amount, but prior to this, I heard meron pa silang over a billion na disallowance. Is that correct?
Yes. There are series of disallowances, your honor. And the latest that had the final decision is on the allowances of the board, which was ah already decided upon by the commission proper.
And, and Mr. Chair, I would like to point out that when na Director Baleti said na bago lang siya, ah, this happened during their time already because the president assumed July one of 2016. So he appointed the board, ah, what I'm saying is ah binigay tong bonus ah with people already in the board, not necessarily the directors, but General Balutan being there, former PCSO Chairman, Corpus was there. And this is a red flag, Mr. Chair, because ah while we are trying to increase revenues through the train, we're trying to increase charity fund. Ah, medyo nawawala po tong issue na to, ah, da- dapat ma-resolve po nila.
Mr. Chair, ah, 'yung sinabi ni Director Baleti, he assumed office November of 2016, kaya hindi po siya kasama doon, oo. Pero doon sa Christmas party, if you will allow me later, ah, issue, ipapadala.
You may take it up now, no? Kasi kasama eh, may resolution ah regarding dati.
Ah, okay.
So, sige, if you, if you have a presentation to make, do it now.
Before, before that, Mr. Chairman, before that, centers are connected very much so that ah it could probably be a very good guide for the members of the board of PCSO later on, no? Um, how many employees do you have in the PCSO?
According to them, it's one thousand five hundred eighty all over the Philippines.
All, one thousand five hundred eighty? And the Christmas party was for the one thousand five hundred eighty?
That's what ah GM Balutan claimed. But I spoke to some ah employees sa mga probinsya, hindi naman sila pumunta dito.
So more or less around one thousand four hundred?
Let's say one thousand. Pero doon sa sinasabi niyang six thousand, ah, six thousand plus lang ang na gastos ng ah PCSO, six million, I'm sorry. Pag dindivide mo yun sa one thousand five hundred, four thousand each.
Alright, that's the point. I just want to inform the body and so that the members of the board will be guided in the future.
Uh-uh.
Ah, the Senate has one thousand five hundred employees. And during our Christmas party, we spent less than two million. Ah, we held it at PICC. So, ah, and in your case, you had less than one five and you spent six million?
That's what he said, but I was able to get a copy from, yun po iano ko ngayon.
Alright, thank you. Anyway, for the record, eh, masarap 'yung kinain ng mga empleyado ng Senado.
Ano po?
Api sila, masaya, may mga raffle, kumpleto, pero maliit na 'yung budget.
Ito kami, alam mo naman, nasa, sa Etios Shangri-La. At sinasabi ni, ni ah GM Balutan na gusto niya lang lagyan ng mantika ang mga empleyado ng PCSO, which akala nitong si Balutan ay mga marinsang kasama niya. Mga empleyado ng PCSO, mga professional suwan.
Anyway, for the ah guidance also of the commission on audit, thank you.
Okay. Itong sa, I wrote a letter to ah the manager of the Treasury Department, si Ms. Asuit, but it took her almost ten days. Kung hindi pa ako nag-request sir sa'yo na isupina, hindi ako bigyan kaagad, binigyan, binigay ito sa akin kahapon lang, o nung Friday. Anyway, meron po ng discrepancy dito sa, from the Treasury. From the Treasury, ang labas na cash advances is ten million six hundred eighty-six thousand. Sa, ano ito, sa accounting and budget. Sa accounting and budget, lumalabas na ang actual expenses nila is six point four seven four, seven seven eight point sixty-one million lang. Isa lang pong aking, may ipapakita lang ako tungkol doon sa Shangri-La Hotel. Okay. 'Yung sa Shangri-La Hotel, ang sinaang cash advance lang na binigay ng Treasury is two million seventy-five thousand. We check number po yan. Ang proposed budget is three million three hundred two. Ngayon, 'yung actual expenses na nandito po sa, galing sa accounting and budget ay ah three point two sixty-two million. So unutilized po 'yung thirty-nine thousand four hundred forty-one fifty-nine. At ah, 'yung one million two two seven, yun ang discrepancy. Saan 'yung, kasi ang sinabi, ang binigay lang po ng ah, ng Treasury is ah one check of two million seventy-five. But according to the details of actual expenses, it's shown ah three million two hundred sixty-two. So mayron po tayo ng difference na one million, magkano na yan? Unutilized is thirty-nine million four hundred forty-one fifty-nine. At saka 'yung additional for venue, one million two hundred twenty-seven. So dito pa lang po sir, Mr. Chair, gusto ko lang ipa, ipakita na ito lang, isa lang ito na mga discrepancy natin. Iba na 'yung sinasabi ng Treasury, iba, iniba naman ang sinasabi ng Accounting and Budget Department. I've, I've heard, kasi insiders, hindi ko naman sila mga kilala, silang nagbibigay ng mga tips sa akin na nag-hire pa ang PCSO ng dalawang accountant para malinis ang presentation nila. Pero kahit anong linis, lumalabas din sir, kasi alam mo, kung natsisinungaling ka, lalabas na lang kasi sinungalingan mo. Pero kung totoo ang sinasabi mo, kahit balibaliktarin ka pa, totoo. So dito pa lang po, makikita natin, ang laki ng differensya. Saan ngayon, doon lang sa six point four seven four. Saan kayo, ngayon ang mahigit na ang unutilized is three million, ang discrepancy is four hundred four thousand. Saan 'yung sobra nito na unutilized na mahigit three million? Saan ito? Eh, binalik niyo ba sa, sa Treasury ito or napapunta sa ibang kamay? O sino ang mapwede sumagot dito?
Attorney, wala bang oversight ah, ah authority 'yung board to look into this, this issue?
This issue, yes, sir. Meron.
Ah, up to now, hindi niyo pa na-resolve itong issue na to, 'yung Christmas party ng number five?
Eh, sa totoo lang, hindi naman yan, ang dami pong nalalagay na agenda na hindi naman naka-agenda, sinisingit ko lang eh, kagaya nung sa PMA na ano kami doon, ang seven hundred seven million na, na garnish kami. Eh, syempre, tangatangaman kami dahil baguhan kami, ano ba yan? Oh, walang nagreport sa amin nun. Ah, pangalawa, itong sa Christmas party, which up to now, ano ngayong febrero? December ito nangyari, hanggang ngayon wala, walang maibigay sa amin na papel. Nung humingi ako ng papel, ganun din.
Submit the board. Can the board not compel GM Balutan to submit all pertinent documents?
Ay, sir, hari yan ng PCSO. Hindi ka pwedeng humingi. Pag nagsulat ka sa mga AGMs, ipapadala muna, dadaan muna sa kanyang kamay. Wala na rin, parang, parang wala na rin ang ano, ang aming chairman.
Ano, ewan po, paano kayo?
Mr. Chair, who is the board secretary?
We have new board secretary.
New? Hindi, sino dati?
Si Merdado, 'yung ano ni, sino? Mi Dado. Ewan ko kung saan po siya.
The new secretary is ah, how long has he been with the PCSO board?
Kasabay po siya nung assumption ni Chairman Penili, less than a month. Ang dami po talaga ng.
'Yung liquidation, anong balita niyo sa lik- na liquidate ba ng GM ito?
Ito po Friday lang ito binigay sa akin. Fifteen days na nakatenga sa opisina ni GM Balutan. So kung wala kang tinatago, bakit hindi mo ibigay kaagad? Bakit you have to hire another two additional accountants para lang madoktoran 'yung lahat ito na mga ano dito?
Your honor, I, I believe 'yung sa accounting department could best answer this because they should, they should have third process.
Paano liquidation ito?
Your honor, can?
Yes, sir, please.
The, the, all the documents pertaining to all of this were, were just submitted to us on February five and we're starting with our audit.
So, that's seven days ago?
Yeah, it's February five. But then there are still unsubmitted one, two, three, five, five cash advances relating to this Christmas party.
Accounting?
I can.
Can you submit to the committee all the ah, amount?
The amount?
Of the unsubmitted?
Ah, 'yung unsubmitted here. The unsubmitted cash and, ah, cash advances as of now is about the 'yung sectoral presentation, ah, cash advance for sectoral presentation amounting to ah fifty-five thousand. Then the cash advance for food, ah, for head office at five hundred per, per person, six hundred fifty-eight thou- ano to? Two hundred ninety-two thousand. Then for physical arrangements of four hundred fifteen thousand. Ah, Christmas trip for PCSO kids, six hundred thousand. Then for chase of Christmas give, giveaways, four hundred ninety-nine thousand. So those were unsubmitted as of now.
Mr. Chair, ano total nun ma'am? Total amount?
The unsubmitted. Asan ba dito? Ah, hindi. Sorry, your honor, it was not ah added. Total kasi lahat lang na cash advances relating to Christmas party is eight point two million.
Eight point two?
Uh-huh.
Ang total?
Sir.
Mr. Chair, ah, can I ask the COA, ah, kasama na ba dyan 'yung in-admit ni General Balutan in record? 'Yung binigay niya sa pare na was ah already admitted by COA is illegal?
Perhaps, your honor, because it was lumped in as one cash advance, one general expenses. We will look into the details of the expenses.
But ah, confirm, no? That's na, that is not, actually illegal this person, di ba? You cannot ah, due to the separation of church and state, you cannot use government funds to pay church activities?
If it was given to the.
It was admitted under oath, ah, that ah.
Yes, your honor.
Okay, thank you.
Sige, accounting.
Mr. Chair, it's also here, Thanksgiving mass, stifened for officiating priest is ten thousand. At sinungaling na naman sila dito dahil inamin nga na fifteen million ang binigay niya, pero ten, ah, ten thousand, I'm sorry, ten thousand. So, ito po, ma'am, galing po ito na report kay Ms. Allegra Asuit, 'yung manager ng Treasury Department na ang na-liquidate nila at liquidation and process ay ah amounting to ten million point six eight six.
Accounting, can we hear from you?
Ah, good afternoon po, your honor. Ah, all, all the Christmas celebration expenses for two thousand seventeen were already ah passed sa accounting department and they were already submitted to the COA as of February three.
Pero may mga unsubmitted documents daw?
Ah, dalawa pa po ang hindi namin nasasubmi- na ipapa-liquidate and that is for the Christmas ah children's party. Kasi may mga hin kulang na documents pa po na hindi ng, naisasubmit.
Pero niyo i-furnish 'yung committee rin?
Yes, yes, your honor.
Set ng mga document?
Sir, according to ah, Ms. Asuit, I'm sorry.
Congressman Abop, may know from the accounting whether these expenses were authorized through a board resolution?
Yes, your honor, meron po siyang board resolution.
'Yung ten point six?
Opo, meron po.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, 'yung ah liquidation and process ay taplo ito. Ah, kurason cedro, sectoral presentation contest incidental expenses, which is ninety-four thousand, thirty thousand sa music ministry incidental expenses koloren na kanano, and the six hundred thousand analisa kasantos 'yung nag-receive nito children's Christmas party. Yan lang po ang on process.
Senators, I'll just recognize, kasi alam niyo, we receive a memo from the Senate President that all committee hearings should be done by two o'clock because we have a three o'clock ah session, regular session. And dito may majority leader who is the chairman of the committee on rules, so I'll recognize him to ask his questions.
And anyway, malinaw naman siguro na, Mr. Chair, 'yung mga submissions nila about the Christmas party. Let me go directly to the issues ah connected with the PCSO and the bill that is being um, ah, heard, heard by the committee. Um, kasi in the proposed ah bill, the disbursement of charity fund must be made to specific agencies only. 'Yung nililimitahan na dito sa proposal na to. Gusto ko malaman kung ano sasabihin ng PCSO, PCSO rito. Ah, Phil Health, DOH, DSWD, and the Philippine Council for, for Health, Research and Development, ah, um, currently, aside from this, ano ba 'yung mga agencies na ah tumatanggap?
Your honor, AFI, there, eighteen, ah, eighteen other agency, two RA seventy-seven twenty-two, the Commission on Higher Education, two RA ninety-one sixty-five, the Dangerous Drug Board, two RA sixty-eight forty-seven, the Philippine Sports Commission, two RA eighty-one seventy-five, the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation.
Eto, ano, just to abbreviate ah the proceedings, Attorney, suntay. Submit to us that, ah, that copy now, now. Um, eh, the new bill, the bill that we're discussing limits it already. So we want your position on this, no?
Yes, sir.
Okay, ah, the other thing is that ah also in the bill, there is the power granted to PCSO and it is remaining in the bill and this is to engage in investments, programs, projects, and activities for continuing sources of funds. Um, ano bang percentage of PCSO income comes from investments, programs, projects, and activities? Sino sa PCSO pwede sumagot nun?
Yes, ah, your honor, I, I believe sa ngayon, there are no other, there are no other investment, ah, sir, other than the.
There are no investments?
Yes, sir.
Ah, programs, projects, and activities na pa pinagkakakitaan ng PCSO, sources of funds?
Dun lang sa authorized numbers game, sir.
So, you do not mind if we remove this power of the PCSO? Dahil hindi niyo naman ginagamit eh?
Yes, sir.
Alright, ah. You also have in this bill the right to contract loans, credits, and indebtedness whether domestic or foreign. Currently, what is the outstanding loan of PCSO?
Sir, currently, ah, wala raw. And with regards to you, your honor, the first question, actually, tama nga na mawala yun, because currently the ah PCSO now is now facing litigation because the, the previous board before entered into a joint venture agreement with the, with the corporation, which, which has now sued the PCSO.
Alright, so pwede na rin to. Pwede rin pag-aralan ng ating Chairman naalisin ito, ano? Alright, ah, um, then there are, in the current setup, I think you have several entities holding the authority to operate online games. You know, PCSO, POGcor, Aurora, Pacific, ah, the Apeko, Cesa. Ah, eh, ano ang, ah, how would this bill, do you think, ah, would affect or would affect? What will be the effect on online gaming of this bill if you've gone through it?
Well, ah, Your Honor, Your Honor, the only, the only way the PCSO could ah, is currently generating revenues is from its, its ah operations of ah, of, of the numbers games. Pakka madami huwuyong mag-ooperate ito, definitely it will ah decrease the, the revenues which ah the PCSO is currently generating.
Ah, because of time constraints, Mister Chair, may I just ask the PCSO to submit your position papers on, on the briefs, on, on the questions that I post and these issues, no, ah, pending in the bill? Because um, it ah grieves me to say that I am not satisfied with your answer. I, I don't think that is the proper way of handling it. So, ah, submit to us. Ah, and then we will um, ah, we can look into the matter so that when we tackle the bill. Thank you, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chair, pasingit po, may nagtext sa akin ngayon coming from ah, the former Mayor of Puerto Princesa. He was then the ah wetting czar during ah GM's time. At ang sabi niya dito, isa lang solusyon dyan. Gawing national ang bola ng STL, PCSO bo-bola kagaya ng loto. Pag hindi nagkatrasan mga wetting lord dyan, kasi hindi na sila makapangdaya. And ah Mister Chair, ah, I just want to share with you ng ah, ng threat sa akin ni ah GM Balutan, na sabi niya, ah, I have 10,000 Marines watching over you. Gusto ko lang po nailagayan on the record. Kasi kung may mangyari sa akin, una siya dapat ang tawagan at ah, you know, he has 10,000 Marines. Ayaw ko kung anong klaseng ano'to, reterado ka na, may 10,000 ka pa.
Chairman, would you know the present strength of the Philippine, the Marine Corps?
Ah, I have no personal knowledge, sir, but I think less than 10,000.
Mister Chairman.
I believe so too. Congressman.
Sir Chairman, thank you po. Bago po tayo mag-wait up. This is for Chairman Pinili. Hindi ko alam Chairman, kung nai-influence niyo na ang Pangasinan, 'yung speed games sa inyong mga board meetings. Alam naman natin lahat ngayon na anomalous, irregular, illegal 'yung pagkakainstong ng speed game. Pwede mong matanong kung kailan 'yung determination? I want your commitment now. Dahil illegal naman, alam natin lahat 'yan ngayon. Inamin na rin ni Miss Gabuyo ito nung last hearing sa, sa House.
We'll give you feedback, sir.
Next year?
Ah, as soon as possible because I will ah deliberate with the board.
Salamat, thank you. I'll take your word for that.
Ah, Mister Chairman, last po, pero po sa moro, may board meeting yata kayo eh. Pwede bang isama niyo na 'yan?
Wala pa kaming board meeting, but tomorrow we have a House ah, hearing. Baka pwede na kaming mag-answer nun, opo.
Pwede na ba yun na Chairman? Bukas daw, sabi ni Board Director Rad.
Come? Ah, we will coordinate ah, Your Honor, but tomorrow I will not be around because I'll be.
Escape alleviation?
Or taking ceremony at malakanya.
Hindi escape alleviation yun.
Not escape alleviation. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chair, ah, ano, hindi natin kayang ikontend si Miss ah, si AGM Gabuyo. Kasi she's lying to her teeth talaga.
Yes, Sandra, anyway, ah, bye.
Yes, ah, Mister Chairman, ah, with regards po sa clarification, ako with regards po doon sa napag-take, napagmitingin nila sa board. With regards to the implementation of 'yung certificate of no objection for the provinces, cities, and municipalities, gusto lang po naamin, sana malaman kung kailan po 'yung validity o 'yung implementation nun. Kasi po, syempre, ah, like doon po sa amin sa Pangasinan, 'yung speed game, nakikita naman po naman na talaga namin very anomalous 'yung ginagawa nila operation ah in our province, especially in my city, in our city. Now so, ano po ba 'yung gagawin? Is there an, a timetable for the implementation or validity?
Why speed game kanina? Kanina? Sinong? Ben Reyes?
Yes, Your Honor.
We just would like to know from, from the PCSO, sir, ah Chairman, ah, with regards to the implementation of the certificate of no objection.
Your Honor, yes, we, we, we ah discussed it ah during the previous board meeting. We will formalize it in the next board meeting by coming up with a resolution to that effect.
Ah, thank you very much ah, to the board, ah, Attorney Suntay, and ah, to, to the Chairman.
So with that, again, we're suspending the hearing. I don't know where to start when we ah finally craft or the, when we craft the final version of the bill, ano? Kasi lalong dumadami 'yung issues natin pag-uusapan. So instead of moving on, Chief, na sabi ko, we're moving backward eh. How, how do we resolve all these issues?
Kasi nga, maraming nagsisinungaling dito, sir.
Just sa STL pa lang, hindi na natin ah, ma-resolve.
Mister Chair?
Again, thank you very much for.
Mister Chair, before we spend, may I request the PCSO to withdraw the IRR that they have submitted to the Office of the President because it's no longer current?
And also the submissions being requested or being asked by ah the Majority Leader? Don't, don't forget, ah?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. So again, thank you very much.
Mister Chair, bago po ang lahat, baka pwede natin patawag si Mister Bong Pineda next hearing. Para once and for all, magkaharapan na dito.
Hindi mo raw mag-wetting yun pag nagtestify.